Good evening, gentlemen. I believe we're still waiting for one more commissioner.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi.
Yes.
We're all just really quiet.
Waiting for the flood. Laugh now.
It's laugh or cry. I'd rather laugh.
So would we. Mr. Donegan.
Care, how are you this evening?
Good. Director Malika, smiling away over there.
Thank you. Good morning. Good evening. God, good morning. It's been one of those days.
It's morning somewhere.
That's true.
That is a fact.
Just it's hard to believe that it's already been a full workday. They still have a lot left on the plate.
Yeah.
Well, you shouldn't get up before noon on a meeting night.
I wished my kid would speak at six AM. Four or five, but today she was good, six.
I told you about having those kids, Richard.
They are a good alarm clock.
You wouldn't listen.
Nah, she's worth it.
Till they're thirteen.
And then Ms. Evans, did we hear from Commissioner Peak or so we didn't?
Uh, we have, we have not. I was just, uh,
Here he is, never mind.
There we go. I was just starting to email for him.
There he is. Hey, Skyler.
Looks like we have enough people to play.
I think you're ready to go.
All right, here we go. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org. Front slash virtual meeting at that virtual meeting at that screen, click on one of two tabs. To either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meetings. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker. Please click the raised hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. The speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute from each speaker that defers time for maximum total of eight minutes. And Alex or whoever we may have this evening on this Monday. It will show a slide of some sort here. And if they don't, I'm sure we know. But our public needs to see it.
If the slide isn't available, if you are calling in from a cellphone, you can, here we go.
There we go. For all of our friends and neighbors to see. Uh, Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call you all call on you in turn so we make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peak.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Uh, here.
You have a quorum.
We have, uh, approval of the agenda.
I move approve the agenda as staff recommends.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Great. Ceremonial presentations. Nobody's being ceremonial here, I can see. So we will go to written and oral communications from our beloved public.
And I'm refreshing my screen in case anything else has changed in the last moment or two. But nobody has signed up in advance for public speaking. If you're present in the meeting and wish to speak on an item that is not on this meeting's agenda, please click the raise hand button at this time. And seeing none.
Okay. Um, Commissioners. Anybody have anything? Wow. Oh, yes. Vice Chair Mazza, sorry.
Um, the schedule, uh, the city's schedule has a planning, city planning meeting at eight thirty on Wednesday. And I'd just like to have Richard, um, tell us what it's all about so the public will know.
If you'd like chair, I can speak now. I don't know if any other Commissioners have comments.
It's hard. You can make an answer.
Sure. Uh, on Wednesday at eight thirty, the city council is going to be holding, uh, the beginnings of the budget workshop. It is a public meeting that'll be an in-person meeting. I believe they are also going to be streaming it as well, but, uh, City Hall, uh, the council chambers will be open. The first part of the workshop, uh, will take place in the council chambers, and I believe that is when public testimony and and comment on the budget can be taken. And then from there, the meeting will, uh, pause while we set up the multipurpose room for the budget workshop to start, uh, and it will be an interactive process between staff and the council, but it is open to the public, uh, if they wish to, uh, view that. As I mentioned, both the, the opening, which will take place in the council chambers as well as the budget discussions once it moves into the multipurpose room at City Hall.
And, uh, the public will not speak at that session, right?
Uh, in the multipurpose room, correct. I believe that that's for watching and observing. Uh, but in the council chambers, I, I, I believe people can, there'll be public testimony taken there.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Um, just a quick reminder, or maybe this is news. Um, couple nights ago, down on the beach below me, somebody was lighting, uh, those paper lanterns that are lit by tea candles. They're sort of like miniature hot air balloons and sending them up, and they go up with flames for maybe a thousand feet or more before they finally burn out. And fortunately, it was a kind of moist night and the wind wasn't blowing, uh, onshore like it normally does here. But I mean, it was just nuts. I called the sheriff. Um, they stopped shortly thereafter, so I called the sheriff back and I said, look, it looks like they're not doing it anymore. So, but a- and I've heard now that they, these are on social media, like it's a new thing that new fad. So I think we need to kind of nip it in the bud and put the word out that, you know, as pretty as it might be, this is not a fun backyard activity. This is a stupid selfish threat to the community was once everything starts to dry out and everything, if those things are coming over the hill in dry weather, scary. So let's keep an eye out for those and put the word out that they're, it's, they're not good. That's it.
Wow. Yeah, I don't blame you on that one. Um, anybody else? Commissioner Peak looks like he wants to attend a budget meeting. Um, okay, uh, Director Malika, go ahead.
Muted.
That one last comment, which is next Monday, the city council will be meeting in person. Uh, we'll begin the hybrid meetings, uh, hybrid meetings for the council, uh, but only the council will be meeting in person. Uh, other subcommittees, commissions, they will continue to be on Zoom. So that would be this commission, Public Works Commission, Parks and Rec Commission. They'll continue until further notice from the council, uh, but want to let everybody know the council will be meeting in person.
Okay. Very good. Um, okay, here we go. Uh, consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item three B two. I'm sorry, three B one.
Okay.
And if nobody else is pulling anything, I will move to, um, except three B two, three, four, and five.
I'll second.
Yeah, these, these are receiving files, so they don't really require motions, but.
Um, Vice Chair Mazza.
Uh, I'm three B two, uh, I mean, three B one. I just a simple question. Th- this project is being constructed. And they say so in their letter asking for a continuance or another year. And we get these every once in a while, but I'm wondering why? I mean, if you're in construction, why do we need to write them up and consider them and go through the whole rigmarole and make staff do all this work for whatever everybody else does without doing it?
So, um, the reason, uh, good evening, by the way, um, the, uh, the reason this, this item, uh, is requesting a time extension is because, um, they have only started the grading on the project and they haven't, um, uh, made a significant investment on it. Uh, so, uh, there was some issues with, um, contractor delays as well as the rain that affected their ability to, uh, pour in, uh, for a wall, which then delay their ability to pull permits, uh, for, um, constructing the house. And so, um, so they just want to make sure that they have an active, uh, CDP, uh, so that they can pull their building permits without any issues, um, when they're ready to do so, but they do plan to do so in the next, uh, month or so.
Thank you. I, uh, that's, that's it. Receive and accept.
No. Okay, that's a mo- that does require a motion.
Yes.
Okay. Well, hang on, interest with we, we, since we did pull it from the consent calendar, we do need to see if there's any public comment.
Um, I do not see the applicant for the, oh, there he is. Uh, if we could open for fetus.
Yes, we did have significant delays on this. Uh, we were able to start. Can you hear me all right? Good evening.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. Um, we had a number of issues here, not the least of which is that the concrete contractor became quite ill with COVID and has closed his business. But there were issues with, uh, attaching to the road. There were issues with getting water. These were things that were unforeseen. They were not part of the building plan check. There were, have all been ironed out. But with the rainy weather, the grading is a hundred percent completed. We were not able to complete the walls that formed the basement underneath this house. And those basement walls are part of the grading plan. That's the only item that's missing from this project being considered fully vested. We've just been stuck in the mud for the last, you know, seven or eight weeks with a new concrete contractor. Everything else is full steam ahead. The house is approved. As soon as these walls are installed, we'll have no standing cuts on the property and we'll be ready to pull the actual house permits. I just did not want to take the risk of having our CDP expire while we're building, uh, retaining walls underground and then be told the house needs to be replan checked. I want to make sure that was not a problem.
That's never a problem here in Malibu. You know that. Okay.
There we go.
Skyler's got a hand up.
Uh, Ms., Commissioner Peak?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve this extension for item three B one.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Okay, here we are. Continued public hearings. We don't have any all the way over to five A. Are we ready for this? Oh, hang on. Zoning text amendment number twenty-one dash zero zero five, an amendment to Title seventeen zoning of the Malibu Municipal Code to update regulations related to the temporary use permits. Do we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair. Presenting this one for our department is going to be Joseph Smith. And Joseph, I'll let you, yes, you may remember him from when he was a senior planner. Uh, Joseph's back and we've retained him as one of our consultants and Joseph is the one who's been working with this and done many of the presentations to ZO races. So Joseph, I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. And, uh, it's good to see some of your faces again.
Yeah, long time.
Everybody looks nice and young and hopefully I do too. Um,
You want to move a little closer so I can?
Thanks. Uh, yeah. So again, my name is Joseph Smith. I'm on contract with the city to, uh, help out on some of these planning items. So this item before you now is item five A, zoning text amendment twenty-one zero zero five. Uh, next slide, please. Just a quick overview, temporary use permits is what we're talking about. The city has a chapter seventeen sixty-eight, which regulates its temporary uses as well as events on non-residential property. Uh, just to distinguish, this is not, uh, regarding special events on residential property. That's a separate permit under chapter five dot, uh, thirty-four, and this is not. This has no bearing on that section. We're just talking about non-residential property uses and events. Next slide, please. Uh, just to refresh the purpose of a T U P, this is right out of the purpose statement of the existing code. It's to allow for the short-term placement of activities, many of which, which would be prohibited as permanent placements in temporary facilities, public or private buildings or open spaces or outside of buildings. This language comes from the city's original ordinance and since nineteen ninety-nine, the city has been using this T U P process to regulate, uh, various uses and events uh, throughout the city. Next slide, please. Turning to the ordinance that's before you, this initiation occurred back December twenty twenty-one, council adopted resolution twenty-one sixty-five. Uh, this follows public concerns that were raised regarding the T U P process. Uh, this is more developed in the staff report, but essentially it, it became obvious there's ambiguity in the municipal code. Uh, some issues with T U P limitations, as we'll discuss, and just with the overall process. Uh, council did direct staff to prepare an ordinance, and so that's what we've done. Uh, largely to address temporary events and a series of events, and we'll talk more about that. Also about clarifying event timelines and looking at a permitting process or exemptions for art, cultural and educational events on, uh, in public spaces. And we'll talk about that as well. Next slide, please. Just to give some examples of some issue areas in the existing municipal code, uh, these are, again, these were talked about back with the city council and also described. Uh, one has to do a temporary event duration. And so the code section referenced here talks about events may last fourteen consecutive days. Uh, there has been over the years, uh, lots of ambiguity and confusion over how that, what that means. Do the uses have to be consecutive themselves day after day? Can they be consecutive or non-consecutive within a fourteen-day period? And then what about uses that may go beyond fourteen days? And that's a legitimate, uh, issue that we've seen come up multiple times over the years. Uh, so for example, a construction trailer that may need to be placed on a site and it needs to be done through a T U P or certain events which seem reasonable, but go beyond the fourteen days. The code has limitations in this. Also with respect to community-sponsored art events, uh, the code section here talks about art, cultural and educational events require a T U P. The issue that's come up over the years has to, has to do with the fact that there are some and several uses that, uh, occur in city public areas, for example, at City Hall, at a city park that's designed to allow such uses. Uh, some of these events are relatively small in scale, less than a hundred attendees. They don't charge admission. Uh, but again, they are technically required to get a T U P, even if operating at a public space. Next slide. Looking at the ordinance itself, I just wanted to highlight some of the goals that we used when drafting the ordinance. Um, largely it's about identifying ambiguous code text. Again, this comes from nineteen ninety-nine. It's a good ordinance, uh, but it could use some clarity in the T U P process, and that's what the city has heard, as well as, uh, providing some clarity for applicants and the city's decision makers. Uh, one key goal has been to enhance the public's ability to review certain types of T U P requests, largely to ensure the quality of life for city residents and the community is protected from uh, what could be proposed. And lastly, just to find resolution for some of the concerns raised uh, to the city council in twenty twenty-one. Next slide. Uh, we've been to ZRACIS three times, the, uh, city council subcommittee. Uh, Richard brought the ordinance back, uh, yeah, the discussion back April twenty twenty-two, where there was, uh, larger talk about broad feedback, context of what's going on, potential amendments. We then came back in October with two versions of an ordinance, a very, uh, simple streamlined ordinance, which addressed some of the issues as well as a more robust ordinance that really tried to pull in a more enhanced public review process and tried to, uh, tackle some of the larger issues that have been problematic. Um, at that meeting, the meeting was actually cut short. Uh, there was a power outage, I think, in, uh, Point Doom neighborhood. And so we decided to, uh, reschedule a, a third meeting, and that's what happened in November. Uh, we received a lot of really good feedback from ZRACIS. Uh, the two ZRACIS members were not entirely in agreement on everything, but they were in agreement on several items and they did advance the ordinance forward on a recommendation to the planning commission. And so that's where we are today is, uh, on a recommendation hearing up the city council on this ordinance. Next slide, please. I do want to talk about some of the feedback we received from ZRACIS. Uh, I picked five, uh, topical points that carry into the ordinance. Uh, the first one has to do with exempting these arts, cultural and educational events when, and there's three factors here. So what we heard is they should be exempt when they're held at facilities designed to accommodate such uses. They should be exempt also if they're relatively small in size and also if they would not unreasonably disrupt the community due to their inherent nature. So these are qualitative statements. We built in thresholds so that way we could actually define these types of uses and give staff the ability to be able to understand what uses would be exempt and what wouldn't be. And so you see the thresholds here. So to tackle the first one, uh, City Hall or City Parks, and those are stated in the ordinance. Uh, relatively small in size, and so we consider that a hundred or less in attendees anticipated. And then the last one about disrupting the community, largely this seems to have to do if admission is charged, and that seemed to be a key factor in trying to help uh, decide which of these events would be exempt versus others. Next slide. Second, uh, component, which we heard about has again to do with arts, cultural and educational events. The question here is if these could be limited to Malibu nonprofits or Malibu residents trying to further tighten up what uses are exempt. So this is actually an area that's still under a review by the city's, uh, city attorney's office. It was raised in ZRACIS. Uh, the city attorney has been looking into it to see if it's, if it's, uh, feasible to add in more limitation language around these parameters. And also to answer the questions, if we were to go down this road, does the nonprofit need to be registered with Malibu address or is it good enough if there's just members who are current Malibu residents and the like? And so, um, we can follow up on this at the end if the city attorney has any feedback on that one. Otherwise, it would be addressed at city council. Next slide, please. Uh, third one has to do with adding a new process into the existing code. This is called a major T U P. That's what we're referring to it as. This one is really about bringing certain types of requests before the public. So just as a reminder, right now, all T U Ps are approved, reviewed and approved at the staff level, uh, by the planning director. This builds in an ability for certain events, larger events or a series of events, for example, that would go actually to the planning commission and it would be a planning commission decision with appeal to the city council. Uh, the goal here again is to ensure that the major T U Ps include this process to protect the community from unreasonable impacts. And so under this, there's been, uh, proposed amendments to the application requirements, uh, proposed findings that the planning commission would make, uh, clarifying the appeal section and also revocation of a permit. Uh, next slide, please. The fourth, uh, item of feedback, this one has to do with the public noticing timeframe for a T U P. And this one was requested that further, uh, discussion occur by the planning commission and city council on it. The ordinance is currently set up to propose a twenty-one-day public noticing timeframe. Currently, all T U Ps require a thirty-two-day public notice timeframe. Uh, the issue here has to do with the fact that the city's permits, including all discussion, all decisions that go to the planning commission are a twenty-one-day uh, uh, timeframe before the item goes to hearing. And so, for example, code amendments to the municipal code, uh, all C U Ps, all variances, these are all twenty-one-day notices. Uh, your ten-day notices are things like coastal permits, site plan reviews. And then you have the T U P, which is a thirty-two-day requirement in the code. Uh, the issue here that we've seen is that thirty-two days can often be problematic with the timing of events, given the lead time to submit an application and then the lead time to notice an event, and so we're talking uh, several months out. And so the idea here is just to streamline and make these types of uses consistent with other city permits and actions and reducing that to a twenty-one-day notice timeframe. But again, this is uh, requested for discussion by the planning commission. Next slide, please. The last one to note has to do with farmers markets, uh, just for those that were following back in November, the city council adopted urgency ordinance five oh five U, which allowed temporary authorization for a farmer's market use uh, to be able to relocate temporarily under a T U P. This is the ordinance that would uh, make that permanent and effectuate what that urgency ordinance is what's set up for. And this specifically has to do with uh, some concerns raised about operating at the Los Angeles County site and some of the problems that have uh, have come up because of some of the changes there. And so this would put this into the T U P ordinance officially. Uh, next slide, please. The proposed ordinance that you have in your packet, it's the same setup and structure that the code currently has, and so here's the different subsections that are in the code today. Uh, these would not be changing. Next slide. Uh, one of the overhauls in this uh, chapter would be a new purpose statement. I read the original purpose statement at the beginning. Uh, this would be the proposed purpose statement. There's a lot of words here, uh, but what this is really all about is trying to really set up the context of what a temporary use permit chapter really is all about. Uh, the current purpose statement is um, it has some ambiguity in it. It doesn't fully uh, go through the discussion of temporary uses and events. Uh, this just gives, this just gives a little more uh, understanding of what the intent of the chapter is. And ultimately to ensure that all these uses or activities would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or general welfare of the city, to surrounding properties or to the community as a whole. Next slide, please. The proposed ordinance addresses the community events issue that we heard about. Again, I talked about a T U P exemption that would be uh, built into the proposed uh, code sections, again, for arts, cultural and educational events. For it, for one of these events to be exempt, it would have to be held at City Parks or City Hall. Uh, attendance not to exceed a hundred anticipated and no admission fee charged. Uh, there's a couple notes here, very important at the bottom. Uh, clearly, there are D restrictions in some of our parks. Tranca's Park is a clear example of that. Events are not currently held there. Events would not be held there. This is not authorizing a use at a park that has certain restrictions. And another point that came up during this racist meetings that we clarified is that just because something's exempt from a T U P doesn't mean that somebody can just go in and do what they want. And so that's important to note that the city has a current permit called the facilities use permit, which is issued from the city, and that gets into uh, question uh, uh, parameters of rates. The allowed hours for the event, uh, various rules for depending on the location, insurance requirements, there may be other approvals from fire, environmental health. Again, all that would be required still, even if a, uh, an event were exempt from a T U P. Next slide. The proposed ordinance addresses event timelines and the series of events. So what this uh, ordinance does is it clarifies the processing of large events. That was a, a topic of discussion in those racist meetings, as well as the series of events. So, for example, uh, every Saturday night for two months, uh, there would be a small uh, music thing going on on a certain parcel, uh, that would be considered a series of events. Um, these type of activities require a major T U P, and so just to give a breakdown of what that means, a large event, it was landed on that that's an event that's around a thousand attendees, uh, regardless of what the event is. And so while it may be an event that would fall under this minor T U P, again, back to the uh, the director level decision, this is an event that's going to draw over a thousand people anticipated. It gets kicked up to a major T U P. Also, a series of events, these are events that may go beyond the fourteen consecutive days for whatever reason. Uh, they may go bu- beyond the thirty uh, seasonal events limitations that, that the seasonal events like a uh, a, a sales lot for during the holiday season might uh, might exist, and they need more than thirty days. There's a couple other limitations in the current T U P chapter. There's a limitation on six events per parcel per year and sixty consecutive days per parcel per year. So just again, if there is a situation where uh, an event needs to go beyond that or is requesting to go beyond that, these would be uh, kicked up to the planning commission for a public review. Next slide, please. The ordinance enhances public review for certain events, and I've touched on this already. Again, getting back to the T U P for major, which are P C uh, review, planning commission review, and then minor, which would continue status quo with staff level uh, review and approval. Uh, again, the major T U Ps, it's a new process to the city. It provides a new opportunity for public review. Decision makers, planning commission, not staff. Uh, there are specific findings that must be made. Those are proposed in the ordinance. As it stands in the ordinance, it's, it's a twenty-one-day public notice period. There's a public meeting, and then there's the standard ten-day appeal to the city council. Next slide. Just an idea of some of the types of major T U P events. Uh, some of these do exist in the current chapter. These are not all brand new. But again, we talked about any event regardless with over a thousand attendees and admission that's charged would be automatically flagged as a major T U P. Uh, real estate sales and rental offices, these do come up from time to time along with construction yards. Uh, sometimes construction yards or real estate sales, rental offices, they're not associated uh, with the permit, the development permit at the time. And so this is a way that there aren't uh, situations where uh, that have come before staff where there's been need for a T U P. And these would be kicked up to a major T U P. Uh, circuses and carnivals, it's in the existing code. We just carried it forward. That's not a new ad. Um, as I've already talked about, these situations where there may be an event that exceeds uh, certain limitations in the current uh, language of the chapter, those would all be kicked up to major T U P. And then lastly, there is a caveat for any event the director elevates for enhanced public review. It's just the catch-all, and it would be used, uh, if there's a circumstance where it's just, uh, it's, it's unclear at the staff level what to do with the permit. Uh, next slide, please. Minor T U Ps, uh, this is essentially what we currently have. These remain status quo. It's the existing city process, staff level review, review by the planning director. Uh, it does include certain uh, limitations. Uh, these, again, these are less intense T U Ps. They must strictly adhere to strict uh, criteria. Otherwise, again, they get elevated up to major T U P. This uh, does include the twenty-one-day public notice period as well, and also a three-day appeal to the planning commission in the event of an appeal. And lastly, this does add that temporary relocation language that we talked about before for farmer's market. Now, those would be considered a minor T U P. Next slide. Uh, just a few more slides, I promise. And so um, some other ordinance updates, just to clarify, again, I talked about application requirements. We've added in a few other uh, topics that the city needs to know about at the, at the front end of these applications. So is alcohol being served? Is there food service? Do you propose amplified sound in your event? How are you proposing to handle traffic control and parking? All clearly important things for, uh, especially with the neighbors and the, and the residents in these areas. And so these are required upfront, and so it's real clear what the expectations are. Uh, there is a submitter requirement that currently you have to submit your application thirty-five days prior to the event. Uh, that's been pushed to forty-five days to provide a little bit more time for the internal reviews that occur, especially amongst the different departments. I've talked about the noticing timeframes, uh, the ordinance again proposes to reduce that from thirty-two days to twenty-one days to be consistent with other city actions. And then this one actually includes enforcement findings. Uh, this was another topic that came up in ZRACES. Just to, to ensure the event location has no active violations and that the city and that the event is subject to all of their city ordinances. And so a situation where there may be a parcel that is currently involved in a code enforcement action, uh, that's one of the findings that the city would make, whether it's a minor or a major, uh, that could be used to um, allow or not allow an event. Next slide, please. Um, this is not in the planning commission resolution, but if there is a recommendation to move forward, I would, uh, I would request that included in that motion is the highlighted language. Uh, this is under the section uses requiring a permit. And so a lot of this is out of the current code. It talks about uh, six events per parcel per year, so on and so forth. Uh, one thing I realized is we forgot to clarify that events do not have to be consecutive within the fourteen-day limitation, and believe it or not, this is one of the uh, sticking points of the current code language. Sometimes it gets very confusing. Does an event have to occur back to back to back to back? Or can it be a Monday and then a Thursday and a Friday and a Monday? Uh, and so that's the non-consecutive. And so by adding this language here in here, it helps staff clarify that, that these uses, uh, these events can operate non-consecutively within the fourteen days. Next slide. Uh, this is my, essentially my last slide here, just getting to correspondence received. We've provided all correspondence that we've received through this racist process. That was attachment C to your report. I have a bullet on here. I just think it's, it's worthwhile to talk about something that has come up from time to time uh, through this racist process. It has to do with, with sites where you have conditional uses. So the code allows permitted uses and then conditional uses. There are uh, sites that have authorized C U Ps, conditionally use permit. And so what do you do with those? Or what do you do with sites where there is illegal non-conforming use that's existing on it today? Uh, no problem, they can continue using the site for what it's been used for. And with regard to these situations, on the C U P side, sites with authorized C U Ps, uh, really the best practice is that these C U Ps include other events that if an operator is coming to the city or wants to amend a C U P, that they're accounting for a facility that might have other events, and maybe those are temporary events. So those are events that operate on a limited duration. And so that's essentially how that's captured. If a request comes up on a site with an authorized C U P, staff would most likely indicate, uh, look at the C U P, see if those proposed uses fall within the authorized uses, and if not, then it's either an amendment or some other uh, change that would be on the C U P. As far as sites that are operating legally but non-conforming, they've been operating on a standard use. We do have those sites in the city. Uh, one of them is the church site just adjacent to City Hall. And there, uh, through those racist process, there was discussion about the film event happening there, and there may be speakers uh, on the call. I see some speakers there. So if this comes up, I just wanted to clarify that a situation where you have a legal non-conforming use of a site, it's authorized to continue as long as that use does not intensify. And there are situations where other users may uh, come to a site to request the T U P to expand uh, an ongoing use that technically is not covered under a C U P. And so there's a process for that uh, that we can talk about. And essentially, at the end of the day, it's about trying to authorize the site and the conditional use that's happening on the site to cover all events, and we have examples of that also in the city where that's been done. Uh, last slide, I believe, is uh, just a recommendation slide. So staff does recommend adoption of this resolution with that added clarification, and then recommending this to the city council. Um, just before I close, I will say that beyond this, I have the ordinance in red lines on a series of slides, so if there are specific questions, we can click through and look at language. Uh, but with that, I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um. Yes, we. Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess first, um, see if we have some public comments, and then I have some comments.
And Chair Smith, are you, you ready to open the public comment portion of the hearing?
Please, thank you.
Our first speaker will be Barbara Freeland, followed by Lottie Sharon. If uh, there are other members of the public present in the meeting that wish to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button and we'll circle to you after these two.
Hi, are you, this is Barbara Freeland. Do you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Um, tonight I'm representing both the Malibu Art Association. I'm one of the board members for that group, and I'm also one of the board members for the Allied Artists of the Santa Monica Mountains and Seashore. Both groups have been painting and preserving the local area for about thirty years. And the Malibu Art Association has enjoyed um, being able to use Legacy Park uh, one Sunday a month, uh, for three, four Sundays. Uh, there's only six uses that have been allowed of legacy parks, so we don't, we don't get to grab all six of them as much as we would like to. Um, but we have been using that. It, it's been a, a very small uh, art exhibit. We do get less than a hundred attendees. We'd love to get a hundred, but less than a hundred. We do have regular uh, visitors from Malibu. We have several collectors that range in age now from ten years old, who's become a, a fan of one of our artists and comes to every show uh, all the way up to, uh, I, I recently sold a painting to somebody who was a hundred years old who lives here in Malibu. So w- we are bringing art to the community. Uh, our, our mission is to give back to Malibu, not just with the culture, but also through um, the sales of our paintings. We then uh, support the Malibu High School Scholarship Fund every year with that. So uh, to be able to be exempt from the T U P process uh, would be, you know, very helpful. We're an all volunteer, both groups are all volunteer organizations, and it's, it's time-consuming for us as well as it is for your staff to process them. Um, my only uh, question with regarding this though is because these um, both are nonprofit groups with regards to the, since it's Legacy Park that's always used, with regards to the public notification, I understand that for, for why that needs to be there for most um, events and most places, but that's not a residential area. It's all businesses that surround Legacy Park, and those businesses benefit from the people who come and attend the art shows as well, who then go shop and um, and buy goods and, and pay taxes and all of that there. So, and and I don't think we've ever had a complaint uh, uh, from anybody about us being disruptive or we don't serve food, we don't have alcohol, we don't have music, we don't make garbage. Um, it's been a very non-intrusive event. Um, and so as you are considering all of these and reworking um, the ordinance and, and the process, I'm strongly in favor of the exemption, and I also would like the council to consider um, on a case-by-case basis, that twenty-one-day notification of the community that an event is taking place because it's prohibitively expensive to get those lists from those engineering firms and then do the mailings out. Um, you know, to notify that we're having um, this small little art exhibit in Legacy Park. And that's it. I'm here for questions. If anybody needs to ask anything, we're from the Malibu Artists Association or Allied Artists. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker is Lottie Sharon, and she will be followed by Scott Talal. And I'm not seeing her present in the meeting at this time, so we will move on to Scott Talal and circle back. If you are present in the meeting under another identity, please click the raise hand button while Scott provides his comments.
Hi, everybody. Uh, can I, okay?
Hi.
Hi. Um, we're very much supportive of the ordinance, but we do have some concerns as it applies to Malibu Film Society because this seems to be a one-size-fits-all attempted a solution that a lot of the thresholds that have been established within that one-size-fits-all uh, make it very difficult for the Film Society to return to Malibu. Uh, one is the admissions. Uh, we do a lot of free events. We do events uh, such as documentaries. We do special events. We do Super Bowl, World Series, NBA championships whenever an LA team is involved. We even had live coverage from all over the world of the Center Eclipse several years ago. And that's something that we would like to bring back to Malibu, but for the Film Society to operate as a successful and ongoing nonprofit, we do need to be able to charge admission to non-members, and one thing that's not addressed, uh, at least from what I saw and heard this evening, is whether or not membership, payment of membership would be considered as an admission fee or something different. Film Society cannot operate without both kinds of revenue. Uh, the one hundred attendees limit, if we are in a public space such as a church that is designed to accommodate well over two hundred people, and we have an event with a hundred and twenty people. and we have an event with a hundred and twenty people, that becomes problematic for us. We don't do a lot of events like that. But this past year, we had perhaps half a dozen events with major speakers such as, uh, wonderful filmmakers, Guamor Batoro, Damian Chazelle, who lives here in Malibu, um, Austin Butler, who's a frequent visitor to Malibu, uh, stating a a local, I believe, and, uh, Baz Lerman. And those events will attract over a hundred people, but it won't come anywhere even close to filling the church's capacity. Beyond that, the issue of the twenty-one day advance noticing is problematic. Even the Super Bowl, we don't know if the LA team's going to be in the Super Bowl until two weeks out. So that gives us fourteen days. So that becomes a problem. And, um, bottom line is, I'm not sure exactly how this ordinance is going to help us bring the Film Society back to Malibu. We're still operating extremely successfully, but we're not doing so in Malibu. We're having great guest speakers in places like Pacific Palisades and Agora Hills. Yes, we just came back to Malibu this past weekend for the Oscar party, first time in three years, first time since COVID. Extremely well attended, a wonderful event for the community. But we have a lot of seniors in particular who tell us they feel extremely uncomfortable driving over the hill at night. So the sooner we can get the Film Society operating back in Malibu, the better it will be for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And I do not see any other raised hands at this time, and I do not see Lottie in the meeting. So I believe that concludes public speaking. If you'd like to close the public speaking portion of the hearing.
Yes, we'll close that and come back to, uh, us here at the, uh, at the dais. Um, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, uh, just a few words about process tonight. We're, we're making recommendations to council. So I think we would helpful if we, however we organize it, if we do this sort of straw poll thing and and flag things as we go. Um, secondly, I imagine that somebody's going to want to go through the red line pretty much line by line. My own notes aren't organized that way. What I have are a handful of sort of broad, general observations that might be good to put out. It first, things that kind of think about in the background. Then I have four general questions. And then I have a bunch of little points that I could, uh, address as they come up if we're redlining or talking about specific, um, issues. So I guess if if I may, what I'd like to do is make the general observations, get those out on the table. They don't necessarily need to be debated now or anything, but just sort of, you can agree or disagree. And as we go along, that can inform your thinking. Uh, how does that sound?
You guys have more for a minute.
Okay, um, alright, so. Like I've suggested with development permits, uh, generally speaking, it should be easier to do the small, simple things like a poetry reading in the park and more difficult or more costly to do the big things that impinge on a large segment of the community, like a marathon. Um, and secondly, it might sound a little bit sort of vast awkward, but I think it might help to consider what code enforcement is capable of realistically doing um, and what we would ask them to do. Um, and it seems strange that we're talking about all these things we can do or not do under permits, but we're not talking about enforcement actions or fee amounts in conjunction with the rest of all that. So I sort of feel like we're talking about a road trip to some destination without actually talking about the destination. Um, maybe we should focus less on the specific thematic categories of the user event, whether it's art, education, entertainment, athletic, whatever. And more specifically on its effects on the community in terms of traffic noise and things like that. The, those are, those are the factors that matter. Um, the, and then maybe we should be distinguishing clearly between one-off events where we have a more liberal policy about what's allowed or what's not. And uses or serial uses that we might want to have more controlled in terms of those things like the impacts on traffic and noise to neighbors and so forth. The neighbors can, you know, maybe put off with a one-off here or there, but they don't want to necessarily deal with a series of things. Uh, I think events on non-consecutive days should be considered multiple events because neighbors in the community should have a clear sense of what to expect and when. In contrast, events on consecutive consecutive days like the chili cook-off, that that's seems reasonable to call one permit. Okay, and then my four questions, and these are, I guess, for the commission and possibly for staff. Ha, I'll just let let me read the questions first and then, uh, if if staff, if you would take notes, you can maybe get back to them. Has the proposed scheme been compared against ordinances from similarly situated cities? Are we doing this in a vacuum or have we looked at what other cities are doing? Secondly, um, with respect to the Legacy Park deed restrictions, I I imagine and assume that an art show is passive recreation, so that's okay. But what if someone wanted to stage a theatrical play with props and costumes and invite audience members to bring a blanket or a folding chair or something? What what is the limit of passive recreation in Legacy Park? Third question. What, uh, on the noticing, um, it seems like there's maybe a difference between when we're, it sounds like the staff is trying to harmonize this with other noticing periods that the commission has. I I see a distinction between private applications where the noticing period could be shorter uh, versus matters of wide public interest and effect, where maybe it does still make sense to keep a thirty-day notice. Um, but I guess that I had that framed as a question, but it came out as a statement. Um, and finally, what are the potential considerations around things like insurance and potential city liability? I I don't know how you, how you deal with those and write those up when you're talking about multiple events on non-consecutive days and trying to put one permit on it. Uh, it 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 just seems to get really complicated, but, um, I'll leave it there and I'll try to interject my more specific points as we get to each item. Thanks.
Um, I believe Vice Chair Mazza had his hand up before Commissioner Jennings.
Actually Jeff did, but it's up to him.
Uh, Commissioner Jennings?
Right, well, actually, I agree with, um, almost everything that Greg had to say. Um, I I I have some general comments too. I it's dismayed that we are once again approaching this item, uh, in a vacuum without considering, um, the other related provisions in the municipal code that that deal with similar problems. If you go and look at the special event provisions, it's, it's quite easy. It's quite simple. Um, you know, as you post a ten-day notice and boom, you're down the road. Uh, the idea that we have to, that we, that we can't harmonize all this stuff and put it together so that there are basically, uh, a format that can be cross-platform is is upsetting. Um, one of the things that we heard about the feedback is that people were upset about the need to, well, let me back up a little bit. The, I I I don't disagree that the ordinance as stands was badly written and badly thought through. Um, but it really, when it was being adopted, my recollection is that we were primarily focused on uses uh, in the private sphere or activities in the private sphere, not activities, uh, on public land. Uh, for example, um, it, it makes less sense, at least in my view, to start saying that, um, you can only have six events a year, uh, in a public park. Um, that's what they're, that's what they're for. Um, so it it those limitations just don't seem, uh, it it follows through when you look at the application process that what we were really focused on was, um, was private spaces, not public spaces. Um, so what we have now is, we we we've divided up this, this idea of major uses and minor uses. What we don't have is a de minimis use. We don't have a baseline that says what's not included, what's not, what doesn't require. You know, it's like the definition of development in the Coastal Act, moving your your silker hose from one part on your lawn to another is technically a development under the definition, the way it's written. What is it that people can do, uh, in public spaces, or I'm sorry, in in either private or public spaces? That's not, uh, require a, a temporary use permit. Um, it seems to me, and I think that this is kind of what Craig was talking about, is that if we can set up a, a, a ladder of less intensive to more intensive or or less impactful to more impactful uses, then maybe we can do away with having a private poetry reading require notice to everybody and within five hundred feet. Um, maybe we could just limit that kind of expense, that kind of, of work to the, the more impactful, uh, types of uses. Um, another goal that we had was to eliminate, um, ambiguities and I I only got involved in this very peripherally when I was heard about the, the, uh, Malibu Film Society issue and and Scott Kalal was asking me about the interpretation of the, of the code. And one of the things that I understood it that was um, problematic was the, uh, paragraph F of, uh, seventeen sixty-eight oh four oh, which says that indoor and outdoor entertainment and assembly events, including but not limited to weddings, fundraisers, retreats, fairs, festivals, concerts, when not held within premises designed to accommodate such events, such as auditoriums, stadiums, or other public assembly facilities or private clubhouse facilities. And then there's a final clause that says not associated with public cultural or recreational facilities. I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean. But that language is carried over, the, the argument was, um, because the Film Society, uh, events were being held in auditoriums uh, or public assembled facilities that were designed to accommodate such events that they weren't required to get a temporary use permit. At least that's the way I understood the dispute. And the language doesn't go quite that far. You could make the argument that, well, what it's saying is that if you're not in an auditorium or stadium or someplace designed to accommodate the event, you definitely do need a TUP. It doesn't say that if you're in one of those facilities, you don't need a TUP, but the implication is there. And I'm kind of stunned to see that language taken and brought over into the new ordinance without any attempt to resolve the ambiguity. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna need to have some sort of an explanation from that. Also, Joseph, earlier in your presentation, when you said that there were restrictions, uh, I heard you say Trancas Canyon Park, uh, rather than Legacy Park. If, are there restrictions on, uh, Trancas Canyon Park and and either event? Uh, it looks like seventeen sixty-eight oh four oh would have to be redone because both Trancas Canyon Park and Legacy Park are mentioned in there. Um, and, um, it, I, uh, that language in, in, in oh four oh A is sort of duplicated in oh four oh four. It sort of says the same thing. I'm not sure why we need to have those in both places. Um, I I would like at some point to focus on, you know, we've had, what, thirty years of dealing with uh, or more of dealing with this ordinance? So we know what the likely range of uses that we're going to experience, the, the, the likely range of applications. Um, for example, uh, outdoor sporting events require a TUP. Does AYSO have a TUP? And if so, how does it avoid the limitations on the number of days of use? How about Little League? How are these things? How have they been handled in the past? What would likely be a major TUP other than the chili cook-off? What, what events have we had that would fall into that category other than the chili cook-off? And I'm, you know, you would think that a marathon would be one, but as far as I know, marathon doesn't even use anything but the city roads, which are on our roads anyway. And so they're not really, uh, uh, don't really require a TUP. But, you know, what else have we experienced in the last twenty years that would require a major? So then we can may, look at the specifics and detail the kinds of restrictions or the, the kinds of legislation we want by looking at, at what we've already experienced rather than trying to do it, um, in a vacuum. Uh, lots of other comments, uh, not excited about this version, uh, I'll tell you, um, but I'll, I'll save some of my comments for later.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, I want to go through the same type of discussion because I, I, uh, because we always screw up on loopholes, I do want to go through the actual red line, but one of the things that I think is missing and is that we, we are trying to protect our neighborhoods and allow small events and have big events. But it doesn't seem to me that the noticing requirements uh, in next to, adjacent to residential neighborhoods uh, would inform the neighbors anything's happening because basically what happens is a couple little things get put in some city publications. And then you wake up the next day or forty-five days later, and there's a giant event next to your house. Uh, same is true with, uh, the the residential permits. Um, I saw one that's coming up where we have five hundred people showing up to an event in residential neighborhood with another lot with, that's supposed to park five hundred people. Well, obviously that lot can't park five hundred people, so it affects the whole neighborhood. And the same with, uh, commercial operations, uh, some of our, our commercial properties are directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And some of the buildings mentioned are directly adjacent. And to have to have the general public rely on a little postcard that an application was filed or maybe not even that, maybe a little line on the, uh, on the TUP notifications that come out on Friday on the mayor, the city manager's calendar. Well, I'd say ninety-nine percent of people in Malibu don't read those. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's ninety-five percent. So I, I do understand the art speaker saying, why do I invite everybody? If I'm only going to have thirty people there. Well, that's different. That's a minor TUP. And and a hundred people showing up next door to you may or may not be minor. Because your whole neighborhood's, well, my neighborhood wouldn't handle a hundred cars, no matter what. Um, so, and we have a commercial building in our neighborhood. So I think we have to go through this and make sure that this is taken care of. It was taken care of years ago when we did the film ordinance. And we put very strict limits on how much, how long you could stay. You had to notify your neighbors within five hundred feet, four days before you showed up or something like that, by putting in their mailbox. Didn't say you had to mail it. And a lot of things like that. And we've had very little problem because we foresaw what the problems were. People were the same people running out their houses over and over and over and over again. And we were closing the highway anytime anybody put in an application. So we solved it. Nobody's ever spoken of it since, that I know. Um, and I think that's what our goal should be here. Uh, but we, and this will be a question that comes up later. Craig mentioned that we didn't say anything about the costs. Well, if somebody, if the, if Richard approves something next door to somebody and they want to peel it, are they not to pay seven hundred and fifty bucks? You know, that's a lot for some little rinky-dink, uh, You know, that's a lot for some little rinky dink uh event. Or maybe it's not rinky dink. It's still them personally paying a bunch of money for something that they aren't doing. Same thing with these little organizations. Uh somebody in town might decide, well, I'm gonna peel them all. Then they have to go re-appeal. And and so I think we have to really look at that appeal process. And make sure the fees match. Now, there's other things like. In general. By using the word parcel. You're giving advantage to certain. Certain people that other people don't have. The example is. The uh Malibu Country Mart. They get three times the rights of all the other shopping centers. Because we don't go by parcel. They actually get five times the rights. Uh will they get? Three or four or five times? As many T U Ps, sort of the way it reads. Um whereas. This is a shopping center. Who who cares where the lines are drawn underneath the sidewalks, you know, it's. It's the reality of a business. Um. So there's a lot of things, and I don't know how we can resolve all this stuff uh without having something come back to us as far as information, but um. One of the things Joseph mentioned was legal non-conforming C U Ps. Well. There aren't any. Okay, because they they don't have a C U P, so it can't be legal. And so it's a legal non-conforming use. But when we set up the city, we have an L I P that says you have ten years to get one. When the ten years time came up. The council said, oh, we don't want to deal with that now. Let's just extend it until they change your use. Well. You're changing your use when you have a car show at a nightclub. It's a change in use. So should you exempt that? Now Jeff asked. We've seen everything that's ever happened. What we didn't see last summer. We've been in a city for thirty two years. We didn't see. Two hundred Lamborghini showing up in the parking lot of a shopping center. Time and time again, okay? We had no way to combat that. So we finally made them put up signs and then. The local nightclub. Moved in. Two hundred Lamborghinis. I'm just making up the number, but it was a bunch. Which. Nobody ever contemplated. Ever in the history of Malibu. So we have to be careful. I'm not saying anything you want, anywhere you want, even though they don't have a C U P for that. And another area. I'm wondering how we're gonna do, and Craig mentioned uh enforcement. Is. If you don't want to get a C U P in Mal, I mean a T U P in Malibu right now. What do you do? You pay a three hundred fifty four dollar fine and say, see you later. Okay, the car show. Brought in all this, all these cars. They had two lots. They had two citations, one for each lot, paid seven hundred bucks, deal done. And my question would be. Is that a settled? Violation? Or is it a violation of exactly what you're planning to do next? So can can we let you do it again? Those type of things have to be worked out because we don't have. Compliance essentially do not have compliance on weekends or nights. Well, most events happen on weekends and nights. So we have to have a way. To have realized real penalties for cheating. Or in in one guy, I would I would call it blowing us off, not cheating. Um, because the fine is cheaper than sending out the probably cheaper than sending out the notices. At the present time. Uh so why send out the notices? Just do it. That causes havoc. So the little stuff counts. And the way we interpret things count, and we need to get it right. Because the loopholes will be found. There's a house in Malibu that has three lots. It's one house. It has three times as many film permits as anybody else. Okay, those kind of loopholes we need to take out of this. And we need to consider uh. Enforcement. And no and 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 mostly, I'm very, very concerned about. What happens to neighborhoods if we don't have real definitions? If I had a. You know, a a commercial building next in the middle of Malibu Park, could I throw a Rolling Stones concert and let everybody in free because I'm rich and I want to have a. Fancy birthday party. Um and five thousand people showed up. And I told you, it's only gonna be a hundred. Those kind of situations, unless we tie them down, um. Will 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 happen. We're famous. Now I. One last comment, and that is. As far as I'm concerned. The uh mara- marathon uses city property. They use Westwood. Uh Westwood Beach Road. They close off Point Doom. They do all kinds of stuff. To say it's not our property and it's not, doesn't need a T U P. I believe is nuts, but that's another subject. That's the that's the end of my comments right now.
Okay, um. Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, I just make the quick observation that's maybe the looks like the way we're heading staff should be. Prepared for a bunch of comment from us on various aspects. Uh and then continuing this and bring it bringing it back, trying to integrate some of that before we're ready to pass it on to city council. Just I I don't know. That just seems that's my my instinct at this moment.
So did you do? We all feel like you want to do like we just did with the ADUs? Do you guys wanna? You gentlemen want to go through or have your ideas out there and then we discuss them and then we yell next and then we do that? Is that something you are thinking of, Commissioner Peak?
You give me. I mean, I'm I'm not a, I'm by no means opposed to that. I think that's probably going to be the most constructive way to get through this in a time. It's gonna be a long time, but you know, try to make it as timely as possible. Um. I I think, you know, everybody's brought up some. You know, valid, different valid concerns. I just think that we should just go through this thing and. Yeah, we're, we may need to look at the language again before we send it off to city council because there's a lot of it. Um I would uh. You know, suggest that we go through it and do that.
Yeah, this is not, this is not just a, you know, one night little conversation, that's for sure. Um, okay, who would uh?
And I I'm happy to kind of run through that and go through that if you would like me to do that.
Go ahead. Let's let's let you get to started.
Okay, so um if we look at the. I guess we'll be going through the red line part of the ordinance and Joseph, did you say you had some slides for that? Is that we can kind of all look at the same thing at the same time?
Yeah, if they, if you want to put up the presentation. Um after the recommendation slide. It lays out the red line version that's in your packet. Uh keep, keep going.
There we go.
Yeah, I realize it's a little small. I apologize. So what we can do is I will um just be taking notes separately.
Okay.
While we're gonna do this.
All right, so just, you know, in the first, in I guess in the first. Section uh seven, uh one seven point six eight point oh one oh in regards to purpose. Um, anybody have any specific comments on that?
Hmm, I do.
Go for it.
Okay, um. It basically says, and then right in the middle of it, it says. And where. Use would not otherwise be allowed in the applicable zone. Okay, that means any commercial zone. Okay, and I think we need to tighten that up a little. Uh I think we need to add something. To say that. It it just says detrimental to public health, safety and general welfare and surrounding properties in the communities as a whole. I think we need to increase that. Uh to say something like, and one would not. Uh unduly affect. The quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood or or something to protect the neighborhood. Uh in this, this is just a purpose.
Oh, so maybe, may I make a suggestion that make me, we just add instead of saying general welfare at the end, we uh, you know, general welfare of our community and neighborhoods?
Uh and and well, I would say. Adjacent neighborhoods in particular because.
So so maybe Joseph, it can just say uh general welfare and our surrounding neighborhoods.
Surround surrounding, yeah.
Yeah, and so instead of it says to surrounding properties, maybe have that say uh neighborhoods. Okay.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yeah, um I I don't really have much quarrel with the with the effort here, except that um. Like the coastal act, it casts an extremely broad net. Um, there's no. There's no limiting uh quality to it. It it it's. It's every use, no matter how, no matter how minor, no matter how um incidental. And um so throughout, I think we're gonna have problems. Trying to uh. Trying to come to terms with with that. Sort of issue. I mean, somebody who who shows up and and starts busking with a guitar. Uh in a um uh in front of Whole Foods. Um, is that gonna be an issue where, okay, now we gotta go in and we gotta, you know, we're gonna run you off because you don't have a temporary use permit? Um it it's that. Kind of concern.
I very much understood, uh.
Yeah, and and I in following both those comments and picking up what Jeff said earlier. I think we need some some discussion of what is the de minimis. That's a good.
Yeah, so like kind of carving out what it is that we this does not apply to.
Yeah, like.
But but in a very, in very simple terms.
Right, and and it's right. You could like one, one guitar in front of Whole Foods might require permit because that might be sort of uh.
Well, you know, you guys haven't heard my guitar playing when the volume's turned up, so.
Well, versus you might have, you know, a gathering of twenty bird watchers who met online going to Legacy Park and they're not.
We can't have that. We cannot have that here.
Yeah, so I can't, I don't think you can just say, uh, you know, minimum or or um. It's gotta be at least fifteen people or so. You can't say it that way. So I don't know how you define minimus.
Well. I but go ahead, Vice Chair.
Uh, remember, this is the purpose section, okay?
Right, but we don't have a baseline yet, so.
Yeah, but specifics need to be in the specifics where it says. You know.
So we need. We need a section on.
I I I think that we're gonna get to those specifics, but just in terms of general, general purpose in in this beginning thing with the the comment that that John had to add. Do we kind of have consensus that that sounds good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so um let's go down to uh. Uh one seven point six eight point oh two oh. That's pretty simple. We are kind of, you know, carving it up into two things. Any comments on that?
Um, yes, I the. I will only mention that uh seventeen point oh four point one five oh. Simply uh says that the application has to include both the landowner and the applicant. So it's duplicitive of of uh. Of uh what you've said when you, when you talk about the in oh three oh A, including. The landlord and so forth. It doesn't add anything to the process. I know it's just carried over from the previous version, but um. Yeah, that's the kind of thing that. That niggles at me as a as a draftsman.
Well, Jeff wouldn't, and I'm just trying to define that down. Uh on multiple tenant properties. Would you not want the landlord to approve?
You you do, John, but it's also, but it's required in the specific section. That's that's specific to this ordinance in uh oh three oh A. So you don't. Need it.
I think what he's trying to say.
One or the other, it's duplicate.
Jeff wants to clean up the language. So Joseph, are you clear on how we can clean that up?
Yeah, I'm following along.
Okay, um, all right, so let's go to the next portion.
Let me, let me ask you a quick question. Uh. This is Joseph. When we get all done with this, is this gonna come back to us uh so we can see? You know, when you say I'll clear that up, can we see how it got cleared up or?
Yeah, uh it's it it'll be your recommendation at the end of the meeting. So if you want it coming back, it comes back.
We'll discuss that at the end, but that's likely going to happen. Maybe not, I don't know, but we'll we'll get there. Okay, so the the next portion of this um. Any comments on what's on the screen on uh let's go A through D?
Okay, A. We don't, that is where. You need the landlord to sign it, right?
Applicant and the landlord.
It says.
Okay, so I think Joseph, Joseph understood that the reason not to have the repetitiveness.
Well, yeah, but this doesn't say that. It says must be said, oh, I forgot the landlord. I'm sorry, I was only reading the red part. Okay.
Um.
So do you strike through this? Is this what you're saying, Commissioner Peak?
Yeah, I know. I'm I'm saying that I think that we're we're pretty good on this. I'm just asking if anybody wants any changes.
Okay.
I'm I'm a little fuzzy about nonprofits and we talked about them. Uh not having to do as much.
Is this just, are you still on A?
No, I'm saying anything in A through D.
Yeah, you're talking about A, right?
Yeah, and I'm not sure where that comes in. Maybe that comes in later.
It just has to be signed.
Right. Well, I guess my 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 concern there that might be that. It may not need to be a specific nonprofit organization that that the closer to the de minimis and maybe they just need to provide some measure of accountability like. Contact info, driver's license, letter of recommendation, or I I don't know.
But remember, remember, they need a facilities permit. Okay, they're gonna have to, they are going to have to provide. The city with insurance.
Yeah.
Cop if required, you know, all that kind of stuff. To get the.
I think that sort of the the requirements, things and stuff like that is probably gonna be some things that is gonna be a conversation between staff and our and the. Our legal team. Because there's some information they're gonna probably need to be there. And then I know there was some discussion earlier about insurance and all that stuff, but I think that staff has that pretty well worked out.
Yeah, but uh uh what I'm trying to point out is it's not in this ordinance. It's a facility permit.
You're right, but it's facilities permit only applies if you're if you're doing your your activity on public land. It doesn't apply if you're doing it in a shopping center.
Right.
Okay, so does anybody not okay with anything else in A through D?
Oh, okay.
All right, so let's move on to the E through H.
Who are the uh who are the agencies? Uh fire, sheriff? Congress of the United States, uh what?
I guess I guess that maybe that's a question for staff or Joseph.
Sorry, that was a funny comment. Um. Not the Congress of the United States, Jeff.
Well, but see, this is what this. The the problem is from the applicant's point of view. Um, it's irritating enough to have to go around and. And get all these agencies to sign off rather than having the city do it, but that's, that's a carryover from. The land use issue, but um uh but but. What what I mean.
You're gonna put, maybe we should just put agency approval sheet signed by all the agencies if required.
That's, so I was just gonna say.
Yeah, it was required by the planning uh director.
I mean, obviously, the first question from that is, well, what are the agencies that I need? And that's.
But yeah, yeah, this is the point. This is the, this is what's required in the application. So you need to have a pre-application. So you can be informed as to what agencies you have to go around and 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 get to sign off on the thing.
No, I would say that they would do what they normally do. Here's your application, and here's the sheet that says what you gotta get. You you do that when you walk in to get a building permit.
If 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 it would be nice in in this, the twenty first century, if you could have online. Under the processes for obtaining a temporary use permit. A. A list just like that where people say this is what you're going to need. Um. But if you have to come in and make your application only to be then told. Uh, oh, you you missed. This other agency. Maybe you could put the approval, the the approval sheet. Could come in afterwards, after you submit the application. Maybe it would be something that you would do. After you submitted your application and staff has had an opportunity to tell you which agencies you should go to. Rather than including it in the initial application.
Director Malika, do we have anything like that?
So Jeff has hit a hit on an issue that I've raised before. So that's, this is, a lot of this, as you could see, is the the language we currently have. And under our current language, you're so. You're supposed to be able to submit this complete application to us, if you will. Thirty-five days before the event, we have to notice it thirty-two days before the event and twenty-four days before the event. I'm supposed to render a decision. And it it's predicated on this approval sheet signed by all agencies, and Jeff is right. The what happens is people come in, we give them the list of applicable agencies. And then they have to, under the current model, they go to those, the non-city agencies they have to go to. And the city agencies we route, and there's about a ten-day turnaround for the city agencies. Uh, so you could do the math. In general, I end up having to issue my approval before they actually have agency approval. And and, you know, we are trying to change our relationship with the fire department, sheriff. They're working great with us. Um, they're, they seem to be on board with us routing it to them and taking that away from the applicant. Uh, you know, not to point fingers here, but fires is the hard one. Um, the fire department right now, they they've. They've got their own issues they're working through, and it 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 takes time. So we can definitely. List the agencies. It's hard with the non-city agencies. To to know what they want to look at, like fire, for example, they change their regulations and often don't inform the city. So unfortunately, it's, you know, shooting a gun off into the dark and 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 seeing if he hits something with the fire department. Uh, Joe, do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, look, I think Jeff, to your point. When you're writing these kinds of code sections, what the what I'm not showing you is I'm not showing you the city's seminal checklist. So staff routinely updates the middle checklist for all the different kinds of permits, and it gives way more specificity than what's in the code section. And it comes down sometimes to this philosophy of agency approval sheet signed by all agencies. It gives latitude for the city to adapt, to change, to update language without sticking it in the code. If it's if it's vital to list them all here for the sake of the ordinance, then we list them. Otherwise, we put this language in here like, I mean, we're not adding any language. This age, this language has worked. It's worked for telling applicants who they need to go to. And there is this this companion supplemental checklist. But anyway, it it does include, Jeff, earlier, your your question about what agencies these are. It it could be uh, ABC, it could be again, fire, you know, tenants, generators, candles, flames, flammable liquid. Uh, public health for food, beaches and harbors, state parks. You know, it just gives staff the ability to say, have you checked with these other agencies before we move too far ahead?
Well, I I agree with that. There is a chicken and egg problem, though, you can see. I mean, you know, you get down to I where it's any additional information. Well. You can't know that in advance, right? These are, there has to be either some sort of a pre-application process or something. To be able to, for the for the person to know. And the reason this is important. Is. We're we're working on time limits where where, you know, if you're building a house. You get to build a house when you get to build a house. You know, you get to the end of the process. Okay, fine, now you can move forward. When we're talking about some sort of an event, particularly, but but at a larger event. All of this has to be done and and in the bag before you get going. I mean, you can't, you can't put together a major event, a concert, whatever, and then come to the end of the road and say, oh, by the way, we've run out of time on this. Or we've run out of time on that. The result will be that the event will just not go forward, will never be planned, and will never happen to begin with. If you can't have some sort of certainty about being able to get the permits in enough time to be able to put the thing together.
I think what we should do is to make it clear to the applicant when they read this section is is to. Signed by all agencies as determined by the planning director. And then, as Joseph said, he can change it. We had a situation, I think it was last summer, it might have been the summer before, where some guy wanted to have a jazz festival. And he diddled around and never turned anything in until like the week before. And so and and I'm sort of remembering this, and we had to have a special city council meeting to have him pull it off.
And then he lied to us.
Yeah, and then he lied to us, okay? We have to, that's why you have to have something in it that says, you gotta have your ducks in order. Before you start going out and selling tickets or whatever the guy did. I mean, it was a mess. So I, you know, and if we put in, as determined by the planning director. Then. We have checklists on everything. You look at all these applications we get, and the fire department has approved. You gotta come back. You gotta do this. You gotta do that. But they're all standard forms and. And there is no way around it. You you cannot, for example, uh. In the farmer's market. They need a permit for every tent from the fire department. They get five more vendors. They gotta go get five more tents permits. You know, it's nuts, but. They the fire department shut them down if they don't do it.
So so I I think that we're kind of all in agreement on this, but so Joseph, maybe the language to add in there is just. Agency approval sheet signed by all agencies is required by city planning department.
Yeah, and I realize also just looking at this language, um, that provide three sets of labels, that is actually archaic.
Yeah, it's not necessary.
Yep, so we'll just say five hundred foot.
Yeah, okay.
I have one question for Director Malika. So Director Malika, after all this, is. The T U Ps or C U Ps, is that a full-time job? There's, is there enough that somebody's? Had could be on it full-time just trying to get this done?
Uh, just about. To twenty-ten. T U Ps were handled by uh, building and safety, so they were under Craig, so that'd be under Yolanda now. And Tracy actually used to essentially spend her whole day on T U Ps between the issuing of them. And then also investigation. She used to actively look for events in the in the city and then. Cross-check those with permits issued and work and then alert enforcement. Uh, so. This could be be become a full-time job. Right now, it's just shared between uh, entry-level planners.
A question, Richard. From what I've seen on the farmer's market. A lot of this on on the smaller events on city property is handled by the. Whatever departments in charge, like the Parks and Rec, I assume, is the one that issues the facility. Or at least they manage it, the facility permit. Is there anything we can shift to these other departments that? I mean, isn't isn't in the small events, isn't most of the work that facilities permit? And, you know, once you know it's the art society and they have twenty-five people and whatever, it's the rest is simple, right? It's the big events that are the big problem, isn't it?
Correct. And and the goal of this, and Joseph, correct me if I misspeak, but what I kind of understood from ZoRaces. Was a mechanism by which they almost had a consistence, and this is really high level, but a consistency review. By the planning department, and then, of course, then go to, I think, I think cultural services, community services. Uh, but essentially at Parks and Rec, they they would end up requiring the liability insurance and all the facility rental. Uh, but the planning department was supposed to look for, I guess, if you will, the zoning conformance, correct, Joseph?
That's correct.
So it 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 really big events that cost you the the jobs. Um, this is a matter of information. What does it cost to turn in a P U? T U P application for a major project? Do you guys cover the time you spend on something like the Chili Cook Off or? Or? The next car race we have or whatever?
Sure. So when they're a large event that requires. But I should also start with, there's a fee waiver process in all of this. Nonprofits can apply for a fee waiver. But when you have a large event like Chili Cook Off. The 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 planning department, even though I think the fee usually gets waived, we charge for the C D P and the T U P. And our fees are about forty percent cost recovery. That that's what the city set in the um, city's budget for this department.
So do you have fees for things that are kind of in the middle, or is it just big or small? Or is it super small? Or are they all the same?
I I wanna say that all T U Ps are the same. When they become big, like the Chili Cook Off and the C U P requirement is triggered. It becomes more, uh, because we then will tack on the C D P fee.
Yeah, and and Richard, just related to that, um, there are, so like, for example, a road race. T U P, that's that largest fee. Uh, it's it's eighteen hundred bucks right now.
Okay, so so uh. Is, when this goes to council, uh, because they're having their meeting on Wednesday. Are we prepared to to adjust these fees to cover? A little bit more of what you guys are doing? Or is that just something that may or may not happen?
That, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't see on the screen there, but I know there's a concern with fines and fees. Those can all be processed as a separate item from this. Yeah, correct, Pat?
Correct, yeah, that's that's typically done as part of the city's kind of master fee resolution.
Yeah, they have a master fee resolution, which is usually right around the time they do the budget. And I'm just wondering if, you know, anybody's got their eye on the ball as far as raising some of these things that. We may be opening a can of worms on.
Uh, separate from this, we've brought up the issue of fines, uh, because as you guys all mentioned here, that there's almost the fines. Uh, the fine in relation to the fees, it's not very steep. Yeah, those are all things that are on the the council's radar. Uh, and we've brought them up in the past. Bonnie tried to increase our citation fees, but once again, we can, we can do that as a separate item. Uh, for existing, like, for example, we have, uh. We don't really use it much, but we have a minor C U P and a major C U P fee. And so in like C D Ps, we have different levels. And so as a, at a, when we do that fee resolution to the count at the at the council level. They they have the ability to define minor and major and break things up uh, separate from the code.
So I wanna just say one thing here real quick. So Director Malika, so to me, it seems like. This is almost full-time work, and I'm trying to figure out if you've got a Tracy. But not Tracy, that you're gonna train to do this. I know, because Tracy's doing other things now. Um. And does Public Works have a Tracy? Does, I don't think Lauren Doyle's group uh, downstairs probably. Much, I I guess you probably have to show them the paperwork, and she has to say, it doesn't, you know, doesn't have anything to do with us. Or do you, is it, are you are you just looking at you and Public Works mostly on this? And and do we have, we we train one person that's gonna get really good at this? And because to me, it seems like if you're if you're dancing around the office and you're waiting to get a couple of things. Just, we need to go to specific people for this. And I know you're short-staffed, I got that. But do we, do we put ourselves in a position to to do this? And then downstairs with with uh, Director DeBose people, does, do you get somebody down there that's that's gonna pay attention to this? Or they got one person it goes to every time? Am I off base here or am I, I'm trying to figure out a way to at least beat this part up?
Dennis, may maybe we should just make the recommendation as a whole. I mean, there's consensus among us that we should make the recommendation to council. That you guys should consider fulfilling a position, uh, you know, and allocating funding so that a staff person can be dealing with us, an additional person.
Spoken like a true former city councilman.
I just wanna, I'd like to point out that they're doing a study on what they need right now. So it's not really. We shouldn't, I I don't think.
I I I don't think it hurts anything here for the, you know, Richard, when this is, you know, whenever we come up with everything, we're gonna, you know. Hopefully put forward here and recommend to them that you start that conversation off and you end that conversation with. It has come highly recommended from Planning Commission that we, you know, have an additional staff person or two to help facilitate this process in a timely manner.
Got it. Understand.
Great. So Mr. Smith, are you putting all that in there?
I'm making notes.
Okay, so let's let's bring it back to uh, kind of where we're at.
Before we go further, um, section D. Um, food service, live music, amplified sound, and then the comment there is include some added provisions to verify. And if an event includes these various things. Nowhere else in the draft do we talk about those things. There's no more detail than that. So, uh, for example. Um, I don't know if you, if. How you make the distinction on an application about amplified sound, because earbuds are amplified sound. Um, someone might wanna have a quiet CD player accompanying their poetry reading or ambience for a pop-up art show or something. That's not really what I think we're thinking of when we're thinking about, you know, maybe, so maybe you want some language in there that's more like. Whether or not it has a P A system, large-scale sound reinforcement, instrument amplifiers or things like that. Um, and maybe to say specify something like small portable radios and similarly sized sound replication devices, i.e. CD players. Or that's.
I don't know if people still know what CD players are.
Well, if you're if you're doing a poetry reading out and, yeah, you're true, you're right. But here here's my point, or likewise with the food situation. There's no mention anywhere of food trucks or what kind of how food might be provided to the thing. And the note here is to add some provisions about these things, but we have no provisions about these things.
That what it's saying here is that. You know, the the city clearly wants a description of what those things are, and the planning director at that point can make the decision like, hey. Um, you know, Craig's having the poetry reading with the CD player, D player, and we better make sure that he doesn't go over the decibel amount that's allowed.
Uh, again. Doesn't need to specify, you know, I guess I guess this gets back again to the idea of, is there a de minimis threshold? What what, you know, how do we specify? Like, what are the various stages of? Foods or amplified sound, yeah.
I I would shy away from that completely because different parks have different, different requirements. For example, the Chili Cook Off, staff knows when to shut off the music and what to do because there's houses right up above it. They they know, whereas you have it, you have it at.
I guess all my, all I'm pointing out is.
It's different. They're all gonna be different.
So you're gonna have a description, you're gonna have a description, that's gonna come to the staff, and they're gonna be able to make a decision on that.
Right.
And I think that that's probably the way it should be done. Jeff, anything else on that?
Yeah, um, I, to to follow up on that, I think that that if you looked out at H and the five hundred. Uh, foot radius business and all of that, it does seem to me that we ought to be trying to carve out a. Uh, what do you call it, de minimis, which would does require no permit at all, but a minor. T U P, uh, which would not require that kind of notification. Uh, that's one of the things that people were complaining about the expense of doing that for every T U P. And uh, if if you look at the special event permission, for for example, you don't, you don't run into any of that. So uh, I think that that if you had, you know, if, and and the basis on which you would determine what's a minor. Might be on the basis of whether there's gonna be alcohol, whether there's gonna be food, whether there's going to be amplified music. You might make that a cutoff line, uh, but.
Yeah, like sort of if if those things aren't happening, that that's obviously not necessary.
Yeah, and so that's that's the one point I want to make. Uh, I I'm gonna assume, Joseph, that you have some sort of indemnification, hold harmless agreement that you give to people, uh, that they sign, correct?
Yeah, as part of the facilities use permit.
Right, and 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 is it different depending on whether the event is being held on private property or 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 public property?
Well, the T U P has has indemnity language to it, but of course, the private property owner would have their own arrangement. As far as city property, we have our 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 indemnity through the city is through the facilities.
I'm just going back to one of the things that has to be included in the application is the indemnification hold harmless agreement. I assume you give people, you don't, you don't have them write their own and then send it to the city attorney in order to figure out whether it's sufficient or not. There's got to be some sort of a form and leaving uh, just the last item, proof of liability insurance. What what, what exactly were we looking for there? Uh, what what type of, uh, what type of insurance do you have in mind? I know this is a carryover from the existing, but you guys have been doing it for a lot of years, so you can tell me, right?
Yeah, so again, this is another thing that's.
Yeah, so again, this is another thing that's clarified further in the submittal checklist, and and I I apologize, I guess I should have. Attached the submittal checklist to help answer some of these questions, there, there is a requirement says for property and for service providers, one million dollar minimum liability. Again, I guess it depends if it's on a public facility site. Which the city has its own requirements for under the facilities use permit. But um, you know, the concept here is is that, is that there is. Insurance required. You know, for these events, and I it, again, it's some of this, it does depend on what the event is, where the event's located, it's.
Does this public liability insurance in case somebody? Trips over a speaker wire and falls, is that what you're looking for, or is it something else?
Okay, and and Joseph, i- if you don't mind, correct it, that's, that's exactly what we have, and then. Oftentimes, Richard, I believe we may even require the city to be named as an additional insured. And basically have have those types of things that basically say, yeah, that if you, if you, if you cancel, you have to, before you cancel, you have to, you have to notify us within thirty days. And so that's kind of a, you know, that's pretty standard and 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 we, you know, process those. Pretty regularly, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, as contractors, we have to do that, you have to additionally ensure your client, so it's the same process.
I was gonna say. Certificate of insurance. Alright, so are we, are we good on everything through H?
I think so now.
Go to the next section.
Well, I don't see, yeah, and the next section uh on A. First. Question. Could you have two one hundred people events on the same park? Could two T U Ps be issued?
I mean, it probably would be fine if it was at Bluffs Park, but I mean, other parks.
Is that a possibility under this ordinance?
Hey.
And is it for sure?
You wouldn't, well, first of all, you would not have a T U P issued if it falls with the. With this bucket, and however, the city, the facilities use permits, there is a cap. I mean, that's, that's the point of those permits is to help control who's at those parks.
So. That's up to somebody to decide, well, that's too many people. Or is it, is it a cumu cumulative cap of a hundred? Or? Uh could you have a yodeling uh? Uh event next to an art event? You know, that that. I assume that probably they wouldn't give a two facilities permits. For same time, same day, same place. But I don't know that. Is that covered anywhere?
Well, I I don't think that there, I don't see anything in here that's meant to to not allow that, but I would imagine that the. Our planning director, whoever was reviewing it, would take note of that if there was. Multiple permits on the. Requested for the same location on the same day.
Another question is. There's language in the L I P about no events. In the civic center, certain months of the year. And I assume the L I P applies to this. Is, and this is just a municipal code. Change, but the L I P takes precedent. So how do we tell people that? And how do we enforce it?
Well, we make sure that the planning staff knows what those restrictions are, and they. Kindly let people know if they come in with an application during that time period, that unfortunately, it's not allowed.
O- o- okay, you understand, we're talking about events that would not require a T U P at all. I know, but the only permit is going to be the application for the facilities use permit. And it's not gonna be the planning department, I take it, that handles that, it would be Parks and Rec or whoever controls that particular.
Community services.
Right, and that is my question, because that's not the language in the. In the coastal act. It says no.
There's no what?
No, no events. And so uh I'm wondering how, oh, that's only applicable to the civic center. But um. How does that get integrated in this whole process, and Richard may be able to answer that.
Certainly, so the, when anybody, anytime the the department receives a T U P. We have to make certain that it qualifies under the exemption list in the local coastal program. So. If it does not qualify in under the exemption list, like the chili cook off, for example, then a C D P has to be processed with it. Uh no part of this is designed to. Uh skip over that process, and the events that. You know, like, uh for example, the the talk of the art show in the park. That would be of such a minor nature that it would qualify for the exemptions listed in the L I P, so. It, if there's a concern that something like that's gonna trigger. A violation of the exemptions of the C D P of the the coastal act. One, we look at it, and two, the the minor category here, and Joseph, please correct me if I'm wrong. Is set up that these are events that their timeframes are not such that they would impact. Uh the exemptions and therefore be prohibited, or require a. Coastal development permit.
So I'm looking at it as I'm an applicant walking in. Uh major or minor? Uh. Shouldn't there be something in here that lets them know that there's another level they have to qualify under? And that's the L I P? If they walk in here and do all this work, and you, and they go hand it to you, and you go, oops. You're not allowed to do that in Legacy Park in the, between. What is it, Labor Day and whatever, uh Memorial Day, um. They're kind of screwed, so shouldn't there be something that says?
Maybe, maybe, Richard, there could be like, you know, I I know there were some talk about having some of this stuff being able to be submitted for online. Some kind of a, you know, PDF or something that someone could download that you can update, that, you know, kind of spells out those different zones or whatever, when they are not allowed, not allowed.
Well, and definitely, we could. Put out information. Uh we could definitely put out.
I don't think we need to do like, public releases and take out ads in the newspaper over there.
No, no, I.
Just have that information available online, like, you know, looking to get a permit at this park, well, you know, you should click on this and read this before you apply.
Right, and and this would be, you know, we could definitely make it. You, for example, if someone comes in here and they wanna do it in addition to their house, and they come in, they they. You use chapter seventeen, they wanna do it in administrative plan review. As part of that application, we have a coastal development permit exemption checklist, and we haven't. Moved that checklist over. Uh to this, cuz that would just be one more confusing form, so we try to do that more on the staff. Um and work with the person at the counter, uh but the point at which I'm getting at here is. I don't believe that. In chapter seventeen for development permits, we actually specify the requirement to obtain a coastal development permit exemption. I don't believe that language is in there, so putting that language in here, I'm, Pat, I'm sure we could probably do it. Would be different from our practice, uh but there is nothing from stopping us. And our public information for making that information available.
Yeah, I I don't think it's necessary in here, but I think that, you know, if you make it available on that website, that's probably the way to go, or, you know. How does that sound?
For me, yes, I understand, and we can definitely make it. Available to the public, yes.
Yeah, because I'd hate to have somebody. Schedule an event. Go through all the. Board meetings and all the B S, to schedule an event, and then walk in and say, oh, you should have done it two weeks ago. Because Memorial Day just passed, or whatever. Um.
It should be like on the looking to do an event in Malibu, please read this before you apply. You know, you know, if you're in this area or that area or whatever, click here, and there's some more information.
Or but but maybe put a cross re- for a cross-reference or or just a. A link or whatever in this document here that. That raises that flag that's, you know, gives somebody a hint, if they're just looking at the code, trying to figure out how they can do their event. They need to have some kind of flag that leads them in that direction.
Um let me go to Rebecca real quick, she's got her hand up.
I was just going to mention that on page four of the temporary use permit application. It does have some of those sorts of screening questions about the time of year and in outlines. The specific dates, but it doesn't directly link to the section of the code that would say that that would trigger it to switch over.
Well, that probably ought to do it, huh?
All right, we're gonna get there in one second, let's finish this up, and we're gonna get to that page. Okay. Jeff, anything else on this?
Yeah, on 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 A, um just as long as we understand, these are not. Um. These are not counted as temporary use permits at all, and consistent with what said earlier, I would extend that. Not only to uh city-owned properties, but also to other commercially owned properties. To as part of the de minimis process, and I don't know whether it's. One hundred people, or fifty people, or ten people, or two people, at some point, there has to be some. Level below which uh a a permit is not required.
My instinct says it's a lower number, it's a lower number on a commercial program.
I I I remember at council, we went back and forth on some of this stuff, and it was kind of in regards to special event permits and that stuff. And we did, after a many hours of discussion, um. I think that we kind of landed on that number of a hundred. I'm sort of comfortable with that, I don't really feel comfortable with lowering that.
I I I am. When you go to non-city properties. You're usually talking about, in almost every case in Malibu. What they call multi-tenant properties. So what you would be telling people in those multi-tenant properties, I think uh. Malibu Country Mart has sixty of them. Okay? If you count all three shopping centers. Or if you say, you don't need anything. Just do it. You have to have an idea of who's doing it. Okay, you have to have. If you had. All the, all the uh. Uh tenants get together and say, well, let's all have a big party next Friday night, nobody. Everybody uh just invite the public, but assume you're only gonna get twenty-five people. Times sixty, okay? Um you have a big problem.
I don't think anyone is saying that you're, you wouldn't have a big problem, I'm just saying that. We have to, we have to sort of choose something, and we're, you know, we're gonna go to. Uh a church and say, sorry, you know, every time you wanna put a hundred people in your auditorium that's approved for a hundred people, you have to come get a temporary use permit?
And it depends on the use, okay?
Well, 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 take a look, for example, at at the summer music Friday evening thing that that they did at. Trancas Market for a while that. That ran afoul, I I guess, right, of the planning department or of code enforcement or somebody. And that was, you know, there was amplified music, um. It lasted for a couple of hours, I guess, and a hundred people, nah, ring and wet, maybe there were a hundred people. But is that, you know? Where does that fall, is that something that should be allowed, or it should be a minor? Uh permit, or is that, that's that sufficiently burdensome that it becomes a major permit, I mean.
We haven't covered under here, under the serial, later on, under the serial permits. Where they could do specifically written for them, but if if that trankus, if. If. Malibu Country Mart decided to have one of those events. At four different places. And there are three different shopping centers.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
So, John, you always go with the worst possible.
No, no, this is the common, I don't know of any building in Malibu, other than the tiny ones that are multi-tenant. Okay? I don't know of any. Now, maybe Dukes, okay? That's a restaurant, but I mean, there's very few. So this is the common situation, and. It happened this summer. Malibu Country Mart decided to have a party. For all their, all their tenants, okay? Well. I don't think they got a T U P, but uh whatever, but. When you say to any tenant, no matter how big or small. Go ahead and have forty people. Don't tell anybody. You don't even have to tell your landlord. But don't tell the cops, don't tell the city, and don't tell anybody else. That's a big event.
Okay, John, I'm arguing that there should be some small level that doesn't require a permit, if you don't agree, that's fine, we can go on.
I I'm thinking, even if you said, you know, ten people is the number, what what then do you do with Skylar playing his electric guitar in front of Whole Foods? It's one person, and I mean, does that just become a a nuisance question if he's too loud and you?
Pretty much just becomes a nuisance question, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I I don't think the neighbors would like that. So two of which live.
Clearly haven't heard me play the guitar.
Right above it, okay. I'm just saying. There there obviously is a small, there's a small group that doesn't bother anybody. Situation, but it doesn't attract. The uh. What little complaints we have, since it's usually a night or whatever. And. But to open it up and just say, go ahead and don't tell us. To multi-tenant buildings that are large, we have one coming in with a hundred and thirty-eight thousand square feet, okay? Um. You know, open up, it already is, I guess, uh. To tell every unit in that building, go ahead and do what you feel like, because it's not big.
I get it, John, I get it, my ears, my ears are starting to bleed, I concede.
Staff can think about this further.
I I I just see, I see most of, most of this stuff is is the Trancas Park music deal, which is a lot of fun, it's most of us all. Uh as I talked to Assistant uh Planning Director uh Fernandez about that today, most of us walk down there. And it's nice, and we've got local people that play, that's easy, I I I. I think bringing people together like that is really important, and.
I think that's what makes.
Not making it hard on them is is even more important, and, you know, the, I I don't know about the farmer's market, it just seems like it's so hard all the time, but. Hopefully those folks were able to do something, and Mr. Talal, um you know, the Film Society is a big deal. And him not being able to show the the movies here, and the church can handle two hundred people, and you don't always have two hundred people to show up and. And um all that goes with that, there's, there's, to me, this is just a a few of the ones that happen all the time. And we need to try, I I feel we need to try and help them as best we can, that's where I'm at right now.
Okay, you have to look at the fact that. That. The church was turned down for that use, okay? Now, there was a reason for that, and I'm not talking about the church, I'm talking about this, this was. Part of this thing we're looking at tonight was specifically designed, so. Serial events like at Trancas are allowed, you just have to tell the city. I'm getting a T U P for, what is it, sixty days? And. And. We're gonna do it, and it's gonna have music. Okay? Then it's gonna happen, it's allowed, but at least somebody knows about it. Okay? That's the difference, you've got, you've got a residential neighborhood directly next door. Directly, it joins.
I I don't hear an, I don't hear an argument here, I think everybody's saying that these things are what makes community, and we just need to have the. And these will be covered under the serial version.
Right, but no, that's, but that's why I'm, I'm saying what I'm saying is because. Dennis is saying, uh what do we need to have a permit at all for, and that's, that's why, okay?
Okay, um so if we go to oh four oh A here. Um and I do a straw poll, if we keep this number at a hundred. Um. John, yes or no?
Now, this is a. This is on city unproperty. Okay?
Correct.
Now, what's wrong with this is it doesn't, it 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 lists, doesn't list all the city-owned property.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair, he's asking you, one hundred, is that your number?
Uh. On city-owned property? I think that's okay.
Yeah.
Is the city, the city? Well.
Yes or no, a hundred is okay or not okay?
No, it's not okay because. Are we gonna have a hundred people? Be able to go to. And this is a question, not, not an answer, be able to go to Legacy Park and do whatever they want. Or are they gonna have to get a facilities permit which will review what they want? And it's fine with me if they're gonna have a facilities permit, somebody in the city knows that these people are gonna show up. And they're gonna have a yodeling contest, and the city approves it. They don't need a T U P, hundreds fine. But they still need a facilities permit, and I assume that they do. Is that correct, Richard?
Yes, no part of this code is designed to eliminate or reduce. Rental requirements, this is strictly just the.
It's just a threshold for requiring a temporary.
Temporary use permit, the zoning.
City property, are you okay with a hundred, John, or no?
On the city-owned property. On the city-owned property. Now, the only caveat I would say is uh. We shouldn't list the parks because they're not all, all the parks aren't listed there and all the city-owned property.
Okay, so does it make sense, Joseph?
Some of those are restricted where they cannot eat and do things.
Yes, like Trankas Park, so that should not be listed there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I'm saying some caveat, we we have probably three or four more parks to own, this is an ordinance we're passing. We should say city parks or something and not.
City-owned parcels.
Parcels subject to deed restrictions or or restrictions. Because, for example, a trankus, you know, that's Malibu Township Council, somewhere else, you gotta.
But John, I don't, I don't think that we have to list those restrictions every time.
No, no, no.
Those restrictions will supersede by parcel and staff knows that.
Yeah, but I would say that city-owned parks subject to deed restrictions are subject to. Uh whatever it is, since they're seventy-two.
They know that. We just wanna.
Does your, your neighbor know it?
We're looking for the one hundred number, Vice Chair, we're looking for the one hundred number right now.
We're looking for definitive language, as Jeff said.
Well.
And a hundred's fine, I'm saying we have to say what? And we're saying Trankas Park, which they cannot do, Malibu Bluffs. Oh, I know, Trankas Park, I don't, Canyon Park and Trankas Park.
I think I have a solution. Why don't, uh Joseph, if you can just list the current parks where you're able to have um events. At such size, uh let's just make sure that we list those parks.
Yeah.
Okay, um here, I I I don't have any problem with the hundred number, but um. Just in general principles of draftsmanship, it's not a great idea. To list the specifics when there may be others come along, maybe uh another park.
So maybe we just.
Uh and you'd then have to amend the statute and then there's all kinds of issues about that.
You could put in a, you could put in a such as or including.
I don't even think it's necessary, let's just leave it as city-owned parcels.
Parcels, not.
Well, but see, I would say city-owned parks because parcels might include a tow yard or whatever.
So city-owned parks, there's no, I don't see anything wrong with that, that's better, that's coming from the lawyer on on here.
No, you're you're eliminating. The Heather Cliff, you're eliminating the the triangle. You're you're eliminating a lot of property that we bought that aren't parks.
You're correct, and I worked very hard for us to acquire that property, and I would really hope that in the future we can build parks on some of those.
Well, what I'm saying is if you say, city, as you say, like Jeff said, city-owned parcels, then the city can decide. Do I want them, let them have ten people uh do yoga in the middle of the triangle? Or 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 somebody uh let their kids run in circles and at Heather Cliff, the city and the facility permit. Can okay that, otherwise, it's gotta be a park, and we've got, what, forty acres that aren't parks yet?
Well, then why don't we have it say city-owned parcel or park?
That's fine.
There you go.
Okay, Joseph, are you clear on that then? We'll remove the the listing, the names of the parks at the end, but we'll make it say city-owned parcels or parks?
Yep, I got it.
All right.
Language unless otherwise restricted or any of that in there.
I would put that in there just to warn people.
Keep that, yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's necessary, but if you guys want to have it in there, that's fine.
I I I would assume that includes City Hall, it's city-owned parcel.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, it makes a, it it because of the part, the of the of the context in which the or the syntax of the sentence. By saying uh that except if there's a restriction, that implies perhaps that. Okay, now you do need you to get a temporary use permit for that kind of in that situation where. The property is restricted, but that's not what you mean, you mean, you you just can't use it at all. So it's because of the syntax of the sentence that it ends up getting kind of screwed up there.
What can we say?
But that that it's fixable, let Joseph fix it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Craig, are you good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so going down to to B.
Okay, I I would like to change parcel to facility. For the same reason, you've got a, you've got something that's got. Six different lots that are used for the same thing and nobody knows where the lot lines are and et cetera.
Okay, can we get some clarification from the city attorney on that and on how that's best applied in the context of this sentence? Whether it should be parcel or facility?
Well, that's really a a a policy call for for the for the planning commission, should you guys, yeah, if the if the if the if the desire is to say. There's a a a a single use on a multitude of parcels. We would like to limit it to six events per year irrespective of the number of parcels, i.e. one large parcel. That's that that's a call, you know, a, you know, with 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 direction, we I I'm sure myself and Joseph can work to effectuate whatever it is.
So so John, what you clearly want to say here is that that's limits, you're you're looking at like, let's say if we take the Malibu Country Mart where that's multiple parcels. You're saying, look at that as one facility.
Yeah, what I'm saying is do not give one facility an advantage over another just because they never joined their lot lines.
Got it, okay, I get it.
That's a yes.
You could say contiguous parcels under common ownership.
Right.
No finding way.
Yeah, contiguous, if you want to do it that way, the language, continued parcels, common ownership is fine.
That 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 also share a common use, right? So I mean, if someone owns two neighboring properties but has two separate facilities on it, that obviously wouldn't. They would, they would still be able to have the six per per parcel. You're only saying that if the use. If the parcels are used for a singular use across parcels, limited to six.
Or related use.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, you had a car dealership and then your lot was on one side and your building was on the other, that's one in my opinion.
Okay, so Joseph, you have enough enough direction on that to kind of make that language say that?
Yep, keep it moving.
Okay, um C.
B. B, I have no problem uh with B on uh as being applied to private property. Uh but the, to to me, the idea that public property, public parks are going to be limited to six times a year. Uh makes no sense. I think it's an artifact uh of the of the 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 way that of the history of the T U P. When everybody was thinking only about private property, not about public parks. The facilities, the whoever controls the facilities, if they're, you know, too much damage to the to the bluff park field or whatever. They can control the frequency and intensity of the use, but but these are public properties, that this is what they're for. Uh it makes no sense to limit the number.
Well, uh what about the public's ability to use it when somebody else is? Uh shouldn't there be some limit?
I think that staff.
Baseball and they're they're doing a da- uh 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 dance recital in the middle of a baseball field or something?
But John, I'm pretty sure that staff manages that staff, you know, like. I take my daughter there for for when she has baseball practice and the field's assigned, you know, they're not gonna permit somebody to do something else on that same. Field at the same time.
You gotta fill out a sheet, as as a parent that's been through what uh Commissioner Peak's doing now, you've gotta go fill out. To see when you can, when you get to use the field, so they'll have that figured out, uh Vice Chair.
Not if there's no application.
I just. But if, but if, hold on, if John, if somebody goes up there and doesn't have a location, application and hasn't filed the permit and I go up there and. I have a Little League game scheduled, the person's gonna kindly be asked to move off of the field, right?
Uh paragraph A says, no temporary use permit shall be required.
I'm not saying that you you may not need a temporary use permit for it and you're gonna may have to move to a different place on the field.
Right, so it's, I could, I I can maybe add some clarification, so yes, if you, if you took up the yodeling contest. And you were on the where the field is reserved, you would not be allowed to do that. If you are a passive ten bird watchers. Who are just strolling around the park, that is, that is entirely fine, you're you're, you you can, you can coexist with 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 other uses. And that.
Say that, that's the only thing I'm after, Patrick, is where does it say that? Who has first priority?
I don't think, I don't think.
You can have it three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
It 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 doesn't, it doesn't say it in this ordinance because this ordinance is concerned with temporary use permits, but it says it. In the functioning of the of the department that controls the park itself and the way that that. Priorities have been handled for the last twenty, thirty years, uh because I've, you know, went through it with soccer and Little League too. It 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 works out fine, but it doesn't need to be spelled out in this ordinance because this ordinance is about temporary use permits.
This, but this section is about not having one.
No, what, actually, it's B we're talking about, which I'm, all I'm saying is that there shouldn't be a limitation. An artificial limitation on the number of uses per year on public property, that's all.
Agreed, agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, so and what about on private property?
No, private property is fine. I I I don't have a quarrel with that because the idea there was, the more uses that you have on private property, the more impactful it is. The surrounding community, so.
But not public, the public should be for all of us.
So, so uh do we have the hundred-person limit on this or not?
We just.
If ninety-nine people show up every day.
God bless them.
God bless them, but if ninety-nine people show up every day, that's legal, right?
It's written, yes, it is.
Show up where?
So I'm wondering if if. I mean, you can either limit the number of days, and I'm not saying six is right, of course. But if you either have to limit the numbers of days or the number of people, if you're gonna open it up. If you're gonna have, say, it's it's the greatest Saturday in in the summer and you're gonna have four different groups figure. Well, we don't know, I need anything, because we only are sixty of us. We'll go have a roaring.
But John, wait, I think you're confusing a couple of things. First of all, under section A. If you have up to a hundred people, you don't need a permit at all, you just go to the park. And uh if if there are twelve dozen groups of a hundred people, they just go to the park and they and they figure out. Where they're gonna try to 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 find space to have their picnic or whatever it is. If the question is whether, whether, so those permit, those unpermitted uses. Those those uses that don't require a permit, they don't count against the six uses anyway, because they're not permits. It's what we're talking about is when there is a permit required. Whether that should, whether those events should be limited to six a year. And the argument is that, no, you get as many as as the facilities manager wants to put in place.
There you go.
Well, does the facilities manager have the right to shut you off? They make the decision, or is Richard?
They do.
I'll let Richard answer, but I think it's a facilities manager. I never, you know, I don't think the Little League are ever to deal with the planning department.
Well, on the snack shed.
That's not true. Bad, bad choice of example.
It's fine, no, all of this, uh once again, in 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 you're right, Commissioner Jennings, uh and and Commissioner Peak. This is strictly just the use permit, the actual use of the facility i- is handled by a different group in City Hall. And they have uh practices and procedures for how they rent out the park and and ensure that. You know, if somebody comes to them and and says, you know, I want to have an art show in the park, while they may not need to get a T U P, we'll say perhaps. They still will need to to schedule a use agreement. And, you know, obtain permission to use the park, and obviously, if someone down there sees it's gonna conflict with Little League, they could deny the use. Nothing would preclude them from making that decision.
Yeah, real simple.
If they. For the language here on B, Jeff, anything you want to change, you want to remove?
Uh, well, the six event limitation, other than that, no.
Okay, John?
Well, I think, I think that should not be an open-ended number, I mean, there's, maybe there's.
Okay, if it shouldn't be an open-ended number, then what should the number be?
Okay, I would say thirty events, just picking it out by one a weekend.
Okay, um and Craig?
You're saying thirty on the on the public, but still six on the on the private?
Right.
Right?
Right.
I'd go with that. Okay, I don't, I don't need, I don't need that thirty either, though, I I think, I think the the facilities person could probably work that out on the public.
Okay, so. I think that for the 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 public property, we, there's consensus, not everybody, but um. We would be on a four to one that we should remove the requirement.
Remove. What required, just the, just the number of events, everything.
In the public, public, yes, not private.
Now, do we want to say anything about, for example. The farmer's market is eventually hopefully gets a permit for every Sunday. Are we gonna say anything about? Unless the T U P has been issued for the use or anything like that?
That's gonna be there every Sunday, then we're gonna know that, and then they're not gonna issue the T O P because that's happening on Sunday. It's like the back, you're back in like the same like Little League thing.
Okay, well, I like to have things tied down because who knows who's an employee ten years from now, but whatever.
I mean, John, I I can't imagine if some events happening every week on a Sunday that. There's not somebody in the staff that's gonna recognize that. I I'm very, I think we have very good people that work for us and that they're very clued into what's going on.
Yeah.
Sometimes we may want them to be more clued in, but I feel like they're they're pretty in touch with it.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so uh let me just amend a little bit because the fourteen consecutive days makes sense to me, whether it's public or private. Uh but I think the uh more than sixty cumulative days a year uh uh is, goes along with the six events, it doesn't make any sense. To have that kind of a limitation on the public property, uh it's fine with the private property. But uh the public, uh the 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 two limitations go together, the six events, uh the sixty uh cumulative days a year. Uh, ought to go out.
So so basically, Jeff, what I'm hearing from you is we should apply the limitations to the non-public property?
Uh, yes, except that I don't have any quarrel with limiting T U Ps for public property to fourteen days.
Got it.
But are you not saying you're gonna change this to? Any property can have unlimited use, it's just, it's just city property, correct?
Just city property.
Just city property. Just city.
Uh, are you okay with that, John?
Well, I I think should, there should be some limit to give the public more use of the property, but I'm out.
It's a first come, first served. I mean, if if the Little League season gets set up, the the fields get used, the soccer's already kind of pre-done. You kind of know where you are, if you're trying to get to Bluffs Park or anywhere else, really. So the facility manager handles all that from the senior center, they've got all that stuff, Vice Chair.
One thing I just, I'll just suggest is we can send around the links to the city's facility use permit. It's on the city's website, it's real informative, it has links to all the rules and how the process works. And so you can see the language that that would be required.
Awesome.
That's good.
This, this is including the language in in A where we say seventy-two restrictions, correct?
Okay, we're gonna have to start making some progress on this, guys, because it's already almost nine o'clock. And we're only on page three.
Does anybody want to break here?
Yeah, let's do it. How about if we do a break at nine in five minutes?
All right.
Good?
Yeah.
Good.
So, uh Joseph, are you clear on the language for B?
Yeah, I've been writing it in and um, you know, we'll give it another go.
Okay. So. This next portion here, starting with C, a lot of it is stricken.
Kind of ties in with what we just did, doesn't it?
Sort of, yes.
Yeah, no, does the the language on the single parcels would apply to this, I would assume.
Yeah, I think that's right. A lot of this stuff, I mean, a lot of this stuff comes back from things that were written in the beginning that, you know, I don't. I don't know if there's ever been a Christmas tree lot or or other than the the boys and girls or the uh.
High school.
The high school athletic sale, but but those things have really been sort of non-controversial.
There was one pumpkin sale lot that was done, but it only happened for. There was one pumpkin sale lot that was done, but it only happened for a year, I think, or two years.
Uh. You, when you get to down to three. This is that carryover language. That I'm complaining about because that was the ambiguity that caused, at least to my mind, it was the ambiguity that caused the fuss. So I guess I would ask staff. Uh. If there is a uh, outdoor or indoor entertainment. Um, like a wedding or a fundraiser. Uh, that's held within premises designed to accommodate such events like a church or auditorium or stadium. Does that need a permit or not?
Yeah, so, so let me just share something on this. Um, first of all, just as a setup to this ordinance. You know, I know there's a lot of red lines in the ordinance, but it wasn't intended to be a complete overhaul of everything. You know, some of the stuff like this one, for example, you asked why did this carry over? This carried over because it, it seemed to be. Uh, in, in those racist discussions, we talked about it. It seemed to make sense to carry it over now. You're, you're asking a really good point. I think that there's language that could be added in here to clarify. Like on the tail end of this, you know, when authorized, subject to X, Y, and Z, just to limit, limit what this means. And that was the intention. I believe of this section. It's not, it's not the clearest section of, of this ordinance, and I will admit that. But there seemed to be this concept that if you have an allowance, otherwise, you know, otherwise approved, say through a C U P. Then uh, but. I think it's worth some crafting, Jeff, and I would appreciate the insight on this one because it does, it does have confusion. Um, at the end, also, I will say in the findings, we did add a finding through this racist process that talks about. Uses being subject to all other city ordinances. I mean, it's like, it's a catch-all that can be used to clarify this provision. But um, anyway, please, please share your thoughts on this.
Uh, yeah, I. I don't think that language can be read in too many ways. And I'm curious to know which side do you guys fall on? Does this mean that, that, let's just, let's get, get it up front. Let's talk about the, the, the. Uh. Film Society and the church that they were going to use. Uh. Does this mean that a T U P was required? Or does it mean that a T U P was not required strictly based on this language? I know there are other stuff about maybe the church didn't. Have other permits or whatever, but I'm, I'm, I'm assuming an auditorium that is set up for this purpose and has a proper C U P. Does this, does this mean that the Film Society could be there and not require a T U P or does it not? And if it doesn't. Explain to me the language that you're relying on to say that it, that, that. I'm, I'm looking for staff, John. Uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
May I?
No, hang on.
Let's hear from staff.
Yeah, we're waiting for Joseph or Director Malika.
Sure, Joseph, did you want me to take this one? I don't mind.
Yeah, why don't you explain just the back history with?
So, uh, Commissioner Jennings. Uh, you hit it. If they have a use permit, if you have a structure that is permitted as an auditorium. It's got a permit that says it's an auditorium between the, I'm just gonna throw it out there, eight and five, capacity of three hundred people. If they work within the, the guise of the permit that they have in hand. Then a T U P isn't required. Because they would be operating, you, you know, as a, for example, Film Society. If you permit a public theater, three hundred people that can hold events. Sunday through, uh, Sunday through Saturday, uh, between the hours of ten AM and ten PM. And someone's operating within that, that's their conditional use permit. That, that's what, that, that's, that's, that, that would allow for it. Where a T U P is required is when you, you, you're operating in an area that. That's not part of their defined use. Um, a great example, I think of this would be the Sunset Restaurant. The Sunset Restaurant was doing weddings. And they were obtaining uh, temporary use permits to do those weddings. And eventually it got to the point where in, I wanna say around twenty-ten. They approached us and they said, we want these to be our regular business. So their conditional use permit amendment was processed. And it is identi- essentially identified that they could hold, I forget how many weddings per year. Certain hours, certain capacity, and then they never came back to us again for a T U P, provided that they stayed in that realm. Uh, I hope that's answering your question, but that's, you know, Trevor and I looked at that, this exact, you know, that section of the code. And looked at it when the Malibu Jewish Center came up. And that's where we fell on it, which is, um, you know, if you had something like, for example. Uh, you've got an auditorium that's permitted as part of S M C. If they operate within the hours of their current permit, they're not gonna be coming to us for temporary use permits.
But, but you would, you would need a T U P if you wanted to do a concert in a storefront shop.
Correct, because it's not the same use.
Right.
Right.
Right, and, and. I just wanna be clear, you need a C U P. And we have. Bunches of commercial properties that don't have them. So the way to do this is to come in and get a C U P for what you want. And at that point, you have to prove you have the parking. Very important, very important.
Yeah.
It's like this wedding I mentioned. You can't just walk in and say, oh, my next door neighbor let me park there, and then say you're gonna have five hundred people.
Yeah, look, look, uh, so. So, what'd you have in mind with regard to private clubhouse facilities?
An E C U P.
No, no, I'm not talking to you, John, sorry.
If I'm not mistaken, uh, private clubhouses are, like, for example, what comes to mind are the mobile home parks in the city, the two. Uh, that is the, the one thing we regulate at, in our zoning ordinance on those parts. Is a, I believe, a conditional use permit, um, that identifies. The, the common areas and how they're used. And so. The Planning Commission essentially would put some boundaries. And we would just be certain that they're operating within those boundaries and.
Alright, well, look, if, if, if that's, if that's what you wanna do. Then. Then I think you, I, I don't think you should leave this language out there because it is uh, deceptive. And I think if you wanna say, okay, as long as you're operating within a valid C U P or words to that effect, put that in there. If that's, if that's what you're doing, put that in there, because otherwise you're just creating. I mean.
We're wasting paper.
Yeah, and, and I totally agree. I think that's, you make it clear. You ma- make the neighbors go to the C U P hearing. If they wanna object, fine. You know, it gets proved, but on an event by event basis and a use by a use basis. It just wouldn't work.
Well, there's another problem and I, I won't get into it, but, but I'll just touch on it, and that is that. A church. By its very nature, a church service, a gathering of people is pretty much what. Is pretty much what these things, weddings, retreats, fairs, festivals, concerts, pretty much what those are. And so you, there, there has to be. The, 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 the problem is gonna come in, in whether or not the, the use permit of the facility is, is. Is read narrowly or broadly, I think. Um. And there's a lot of room, I mean, you know, well, okay, you know, you talked about having. Uh, a gatherer, gathering of people who were worshiping, but you didn't have. Uh, you didn't, you don't have a permit for a gathering of people who are, who are worshiping.
Watching a film.
Or worshiping Orson, Orson Welles.
Orson Welles, yeah, you know, um, so. There's some, some potential problems there, but I'll drop it now because, as you said, we've got to move on.
Well, wait, so just, so I understand, are you basically saying that the Film Society could do their thing at the church or the synagogue if they? Got a C U P amendment? Is that what?
Well, if there is a C U P.
If, if they have an existing C U P that allows that to operate as it is in an auditorium, that something like. Those screenings would be able to operate under that existing permit.
If it's in the C U P.
If it's in the C U P, correct.
And, and if it's not, then all they need is an amendment.
Correct. And then that.
They, if, Craig, as I keep repeating. Most commercial buildings in Malibu do not have them. I don't know about the church. Before you amend a C U P, you have to get one.
So if you don't have one, you would have to get one.
Yeah. And that's the way.
That would also, you know, that eliminates you having to come and get these kind of, you know. I'm not gonna say Mickey Mouse, but you know, if it was, you know, like, it eliminates you do it, having to do what the sunset did. And, and Richard gave a very good example of that.
Yeah.
Well, I'll give you, yeah, that's a very good example. The opposite example is. The nightclub. Well, actually, it does, it does have a C U P. It doesn't mention car shows.
What nightclub?
That's clearly a different use of a different part of the property.
Ah, they use the whole thing, but whatever. Uh, but anyway, it's just. You do it right, you do it the first time the city council passed uh, the C U P down to when you change a use, you need to get one. Instead of whether that ten years after we adopted the L I P in two thousand and two, you had to get one.
Well, maybe this will be used as a way where more people will get C U Ps.
Right.
Alright, Commissioner Jennings, so just hang on, Commissioner Jennings, and I'm gonna ask Director Malika a question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't put my hand out.
Okay, Director Malika, where does the church stand?
The Presbyterian Church by in City Hall, they have a pending application uh, for a C D P and a C U P. So, uh. You know, we definitely, I, I wanna say, uh, our, our staff planner, Renika, reached out to them when this became an issue about a year ago. Uh, you know, suggesting that we could enroll this into the uses on their conditional use permit for the commission to hear. But my understanding is the application still remains incomplete. That's why we haven't presented it to the commission.
And what about the synagogue?
Synagogue out, and we gave it to them.
Yes, and their C U P uh, that was approved by the commission uh, specifically identifies the ability to hold film screenings.
So we're on hold at the church for everything right now, except for church services.
Uh, basically, they can continue to operate as they have done. You know, the father-daughter dance, uh, the preschool, the, the things they've been doing since cityhood, they can keep up with.
But no films society yet.
Why are they not doing the films at the synagogue then?
Cause they're remodeling, remember?
Oh, cause they're actively, right, right, right. Right, let's, let's, let's take our break.
Let's go.
Five minutes?
Yep.
Five minutes.
Make sure to turn off cameras and mics.
Chair Smith, I'm ready and waiting when everybody's back in the meeting.
Pidoki.
I've got my little sprint in.
I'd imagine that's just about everybody on this one.
Sorry, started raining. Had to go close windows.
Yeah.
Rises around here, I guess.
Yeah, this is gonna be another dandy.
Well, well, okay, so we're making a little bit of progress here.
Uh, yeah, and I I forget if I mentioned, but I have some other considerations that aren't necessarily in the red line. So I don't know, but maybe we'll just save those for the end.
Okay, yeah, let's try to work through this. We're 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 uh, let's go forward. Um, we can pull that slide back up or are we all back and good to go?
Think so. I think uh we're now the public, uh, I mean, we're we're back at our
Okay, so there's there's, I see here that there's kind of consensus amongst us that we should probably I guess maybe do away with some of the stuff here um that that's stricken. Uh, based on our conversation, is that correct?
What are we looking at now?
See.
Oh.
It's stricken, it's gone.
Or are we just gonna strike it? The whole thing? Cause it's really talking about what we've already talked about?
Now, are you talking about C?
Yes, sir.
Offices and model homes?
Yes.
Okay, and and is there any objection to striking those two?
The I guess the only, I don't think there's a objection, but I know that Richard, and maybe this is the part for that or not, when you were talking about some uses in regards to construction sites.
He wants to move those to majors, um, GUPs.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Let me ask a quick question on those moving those. This ordinance doesn't cover residential. So we're just what are we moving him to?
You're right.
So we just strike him, right? Are are we? We just strike him, I would assume.
What's the answer, Richard?
You are correct about this not applying to residential. However, we've actually, I want to say received and Joseph, I know you're, I know you could jump in on this, and I'm actually thinking you might have been the planner when you were here. But I know we've had some requests for construction sites on commercial properties.
We we've approved them.
Well, we've done them through the the CUP process because of the time limit issue. And so, Joseph, we're seeking to address that, correct?
Yes, so what I realized here, this is a a minor edit that we can make back up in oh four OB where we just spent a lot of time on the six events and all that. It says accept residential which are subject to special event permit regulations. One of the, one of the I didn't really get into this, but one of the challenges with the way that Malibu has historically done TUPs is Malibu uses a TUP for events and temporary uses. So traditionally, there's a question asked, have you looked at other ordinances? And the answer is yes, and cities will use TUPs just for uses like like a uh uh sales, the sales facility on a residential lot for a project that's coming. Right? You would issue a TUP for that. As far as events goes, you would do special event permits. You have a sec, totally separate section of the code that gets into all the event stuff. Malibu has has changed it up a bit. So we have for residence, events on residential property, we have the SCP. Um, what I can do to fix this is say backup and B where we get into, you know, limited to six events per parcel, blah, blah, blah. And then we say accept events in residential zones which are subject to a special event permit. By stating that a couple of words there, what it does is it still allows temporary uses on residential zones, but temporary uses, not events. So we could deal with the construction yard, we could deal with the sales trailer, that type of thing, if they are, say, on a multifamily site. Or a a single family site. That's that's an option to address this.
Okay, do we have?
I have a big problem with that. You're you're taking a residential zone and saying you can throw a commercial commercial use in there without any hearings. You know, I could have, I got two houses going across the street from me. They just set up their their uh story pools. Now I could be looking at the house next door to me being the con- the construction yard. For how long? You know, without any input. All over Malibu, this could be happening. Now, we we provided for it on the burnouts. But because they have the land there, they could have a trailer and blah, 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 on a temporary basis. But there's one house next to Paradise Cove that's been under construction for four and a half years. Okay, so it's kind of when we start getting into the residential zone, I get nervous because you can, you can really make somebody's life miserable for a long time.
John, so real estate, sales, rental offices, construction yards, those are all major TUPs. Those would be a public hearing of the planning commission. All that I, all that I would propose to change is that we can look at a temporary use through a major TUP in a residential zone.
Well, I would, I would say that we need a very short limit on it.
Yeah.
Those zones impact a lot of people. And for example, the house I mentioned, four and a half years for a lot of peoples, a lot of, a lot of hassle. And uh we don't know where these are going to be. They're plunked in the middle of Malibu Park. It's a little different than them being plunked up in in uh Papa Carbon Canyon, uh, and some guy developing ten houses or something. Where there's nobody around it. But this is a big deal for neighborhoods. My street we only have thirty eight houses. We've got six going in in the next year.
Yeah, I I agree. I'm nervous about that in the residential, but without a really clear idea of what they might be. And I don't know, I can't imagine what they could be.
But I I think that that's what he's saying is that if it's going in the residential, that it would be under a major and it would come to the planning commission.
Yeah, but there's a planning commission. They should be restricted too. I mean can you give a five year permit? That's what we gave Ellison, okay, on his parking lot, but he used a CUP. We gave the guy with the with the trailer that's selling uh I don't know what he's selling trailers right down below City Hall. We I think we gave him two years or three years. And I think in a resident, but those were commercial areas. In a residential area, we shouldn't be able to say, oh, you can put up a construction yard next to a private uh house.
Yeah.
It's it's like really offensive to protecting neighborhoods. So maybe we could go for this, but three months or something, but not, not or you go in and you you do the whole banana, but uh to just open it up to where some future planning commission could screw over some guy by putting a construction yard next to his house for a long period of time is is not what we're doing here. We're trying to provide commercial uses to have TUPs.
By whole banana, you mean CUP?
I would say a zone change personally. I mean, I somebody mixing cement, mixing cement next to my house. Seven o'clock in the morning, ding 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 ding, you know, backing up trucks and stuff. Uh, I'm, you know, it's just, it doesn't seem like it belongs in this ordinance. Mixing residential and commercial.
Could somebody guide me to the paragraph we're discussing right now?
Uh, yeah, if you can go back, I think it's
Oh, the paragraph?
Is it, is it, is it oh four OC?
It's oh four OB.
Oh, four or B, okay.
He he was talking about adding something to the end of that that would encompass um some of the other uses that we were talking about moving.
Right, right, right.
Figuring out language to go in there that wouldn't eliminate the fact that it has to come for a, you know, a major or a a hearing before the planning commission.
Well, uh, okay.
I'm talking about three F, no, on four G. Is that, is that?
So um Joseph, could you?
Really, it's C, C, real estate offices.
Well, but look we can, we we don't need to spend a lot of time on real estate sales offices or model homes and temporary track offices in this context, because that's, we're not the San Fernando Valley in nineteen fifty four. There, I can't think of when we have had that, apart from that one uh places below, below City Hall, but which was done in a different manner. So I'm I'm perfectly happy to have A and B stricken.
So, all right, so let's um, do we see a need to encompass those anywhere else in this document?
I don't think so, because they're they're commercial, they're residential. You know, they they can get them if they were commercial properties. It's just not residential. With this, this isn't uh to be residential.
Richard, do you see any need to have this language in here anywhere or no, that what we're referencing right now?
No, I think uh, and Joseph, I I really think we could take it out.
Yeah, we we could strike the uh, from the major TUP section, we would strike the real estate construction lay down yard. And then just leave this B language. See, on the third line where it says accept residential which are subject to special event permit regulations.
Yep.
The the point that I was making is if you change.
I don't see that. I'm sorry. Where where is that, Joseph? I'm looking at.
Uh, on the, well, on the screen.
It's on oh four OB. It's right in front of us. We already went over it. We we went back to it.
And my only point in raising this again was that this language one issue with this language is that it's a little specific to special events in residential zones. The the question for the planning commission is, do you want to build in an allowance for a temporary use, like a a real temporary use in a residential zone? You know, and that's why we were talking about like a real estate sales office tied to a multifamily projects. You're totally understand, there's not a lot of those. But if it comes up, I guess one way it could be addressed is through the development permit as part of the overall entitlement. But if there's a situation where that isn't the case, then is the planning commission open to considering temporary uses in a residential zone? Anyway, that's why I was saying you could modify this B language to distinguish that, or you just leave it, you know, as it is, it is what it is. And it just means that there are, there's nothing residential included in this ordinance whatsoever. Which which means that you do not allow temporary uses in a residential zone. That's.
It it's it's not a great fit because for for, let me ask you a question. How how are construction trailers handled?
Richard, you get one until.
I'm, yeah, Richard.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Jennings, right now, uh, they are just we have not been identifying them as part of the the permits. We've, our practice has been that as long as you have active building permits on site, you can have a trailer, a construction trailer on site. It's if active construction sees it or or stops, uh, then there's an issue there, but we see the trailer as just part of the construction work.
Right, and there can be construction materials parked on site. And there can be construction equipment parked on site.
Yes.
Well, what else do we need?
So these types of yards are if it is offsite.
I, okay, okay. And there was some talk after the fire about wouldn't it be a good idea to set up a centralized yard system, but
Yes.
horses left the barn and um, I I it it doesn't seem to me that 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 it 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 doesn't seem to me that that an offsite construction lay down area in a residential zone is really something we need to address as part of a TUP process. This doesn't, they don't seem to go together to me, but that's just my thing.
Yeah.
Let's just eliminate, let's just do it, leave it as it is, scratch it out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna, so we'll we'll eliminate that then for now. So if we can go back to the other, the next slide um, or down, uh how do you guys want to deal with the seasonal activities? On one C? Or what was one C?
Personally, I think all of those, the the uh one and two uh are are fine. I mean, that they they've never caused a problem. They've been in there from the beginning. They're not really critical to to you know, not controversial. Um, don't know if they've ever been used, actually. But I I would just leave them alone.
What's one and two? Are you talking about?
Is there about one C?
Christmas tree, pumpkin sales and and uh and the uh
Special events.
Special events, if somebody has a display out in front of their store, something like that. Um, that's one and two. Number three, we've gone over, we've already discussed.
I don't even get where you're getting this one, two and threes.
That the the first one, John, is labeled as one C.
Right, I don't see the rest of them.
Let's just, we'll start with one C. We're gonna leave the language as it is, you're striking the parts that you're striking.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, if we go, let's go to the next area.
And that's what it's?
That's, it looks like two E, but it's really two. Yeah, there you go.
It was E, now it's two.
Yeah.
So two will, D is gone, two will stay the way that it's written on there with the portion stricken.
Mine's different.
Are you looking at the screen?
Page four. Page four, Mr.
It's would be the top left of page four, if you're looking at. Um and then three, three would be entirely stricken. Because we're basically saying that that would be already be allowed under the um CUP.
Right. Well, either that or rework it so that it makes it clear that those don't require temporary use permits if they're covered by the CUP. Or if they're consistent with the CUP.
Yeah, I I can talk to Richard about this one. It could, like you said, either strike the whole thing or within the language. If you follow along where it says um premises to design, designed to accommodate such events. Sort of in the middle there.
Yep.
You could say, or on a parcel that otherwise requires an approved conditional use permit uh and or any other permit as applicable. I mean, we could add in language in here to it's.
I think, I think that if you add in language there to make that clear is what our intention is, that we're moving in the right direction.
Well, I I think uh Richard had a pretty good explanation that we don't need the language. It's in our code.
So I would say that if that's the case, then let's either remove this language, or if you guys think when you talk amongst yourselves that we do need it in there, let's just make it very clear as to what our intention is. That if it's something that would require an existing CUP or be under the use of the existing CUP, that the temporary use permit is not required.
Right.
I think it's. So I would strike it and and so we don't have to, you know, go over this a million times every time we have a hearing. It's.
I would leave it in there because it's unusual, because you're talking about a person other than the person who operates the structure who is going to be using it for for a related, but not quite the same purpose. And and otherwise, if you strike it all together it you you've you've got you've opened up a larger can of worms, because now we got a different person, you got the 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 uh, the film society versus the church. I I think you cleaned it up by state, I I think you cleaned it up by saying what you intend this, the paragraph to mean, and I would, I would leave that in there that way.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that's what the intention is. The intention is you need a CUP. It says you can do it.
I think you do want some call out to this, the need for the CUP is.
So let's leave the language in there and reference that. Or Richard and Joseph, are you good with that?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll put it in there and we can, uh, we'll look at it again.
Okay.
Great.
Um, so let's go down to four.
Now.
Was four G.
Why, why isn't that just duplicative of uh A?
Yeah, so you mentioned that before, Jeff. The reason here is because this was, this was one of the the key issues that has come up over and over and over. So this is just to make it, it's it's probably duplicative, because uh in my mind, I was trying to make it super clear that when you have one of these events, if you're on city property, you don't need a TUP. If you have one of these events and you're not on city property, you need a TUP.
Okay.
You're right.
The only thing I would change is the the to fix the parts in City Hall language to be the same as we have, we changed up above.
And.
You're saying that when that language is referenced.
Yeah.
Just just put in the the city. Whatever we said, city parcels and.
Parcels or parks.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So uh. Who gets to decide whether uh an event is artistic or cultural or educational?
They're all uh all the.
Good question.
Well, but see.
Come on, do we have a an art, an art description declaration committee?
We all, we all like those things. Um, uh, what if the? Uh. Malibu chapter of revive the CCP wants to hold the. Joseph Stalin birthday celebration, that educational, is it artistic? I mean, you're going, it's it's. It's self comforting to say, oh, we're just gonna, we're just talking about the arts. But. What you're really talking about, I mean, a car show is if it's antique cars, very artistic, very cultural. Uh, I I would. I would be. But I just don't want you to be fooling yourselves. That somehow this is all going to be. You know, uh, clear cut.
Another another dividing line is, and I'm not sure how much it bears on this particular item, but the nonprofit versus profit thing that kind of. Relates to that. Is it arts or education versus commerce?
Well.
So can we pull four G up on the screen?
Oh, yeah. See, the difference is A doesn't say anything at all. About art, cultural or educational exhibits and displays. So. I think if you just struck the whole thing, you'll be better off.
Yeah, because freedom of speech is also a constitutional right, so you could have. The American boon to show up.
So let's just strike four G then.
That would be my suggestion.
Are we good with that?
Yes.
While we were there, can I just ma- make a couple observations about nonprofits? Um, because I think so, they're not listed anywhere else in the whole thing. But I'm wondering if we said there was a fee waiver for nonprofit artistic, cultural, educational. And I wonder if we want to say that there's still some nominal fee like fifty bucks or something. Because if something's in completely free, it would be really easy for people or easier for people to believe there's no requirement for any city review. Or any permit if it's free. But if we say you gotta pay fifty bucks, then maybe that's makes it. You know, more legitimate somehow, and people have to do it.
Where are you seeing this?
It's not anywhere.
Does not exist.
Yeah, that's my point is that there's a couple of things about nonprofits that we.
Where where do we waive? We don't waive the fees. They have to go to city council and do.
Richard, Richard said there's a a procedure for fee waiver for nonprofits.
There's a process by which they can ask.
But they have to go to city council to get it.
That's right. That's that's.
Okay, what you're saying is that you should institute some sort of a fee regardless.
Yeah, and maybe it's a lower, lower fee. And then they and A, they. It'll make it more real and B, they won't have to come to city council for a special accommodation because they can just pay the fifty bucks.
All of our fees are our fees are regulated separately from this sort of thing. We don't have. The fees for coastal development permit in our in our statutes. It's all done by fee resolutions.
And they're also. Yeah, they're also correct done by how big it is and what it is too. Uh, I I don't think we we can.
I don't think we'll touch that at this point.
I don't think we can put it in legally. Fees.
I I want to clarify. Uh, I want to clarify that the permit, the the fee schedule does include a nonprofit rate for T U Ps. It's about half. Of the other. So it is a reduced fee, but still at that, some do request a waiver. Well, I guess I'm confused because there was some discussion of nonprofit in the staff report part, just not in the in the. Draft here and another thought I had, if there's, if there's.
I think that was that was sort of in reference to the fact that that there is the ability for them to get a fee waiver.
Yeah.
Yeah, and by the way, Craig, fees can't be set by the city council at will. They have to do this fee study of what other cities do and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And and it's totally different law and everything than. Then our uh. Ordinance here.
Okay, so let's let's go back to to focusing on this and now let's swing down to uh. Five, what was uh five H?
Uh, Skyler. Can I just raise a point about just with respect to the recommendation to strike this altogether?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and this backs up to to Jeff's comment about A, which is. Verbatim with what we see here about city owned facilities and stuff. If we strike the red line addition. That makes sense with Jeff's comment about A, but if we strike the entire thing. What I think sets up a complication is that what what that means is that somebody could not get a T U P. Or one of these events. On a commercial site. For example.
Like, that's not our intention. Our intention is.
I didn't think so. It seems like. You're still okay with these events getting a T U P. Maybe we just strike the red line language here. But not the whole. The whole thing.
That makes sense.
Well, I but. But. Then why is there a basis for distinguishing between?
It wouldn't matter whether it's arts and educational or it's not.
Yeah, I want to do something which is decidedly uh. Uneducational, and I want to get a permit for it. And why? Why? Why should we call out these? Three uh for. Because it implies that we're excluding. Others, doesn't it?
What I think they're saying is that. Yeah, yes, you're correct. I'm gonna go with we can strike it. Okay. But but just don't, don't, don't have the language and end up so that it sounds like if you're doing one of these that you can't.
Yeah.
Get a T U P if you should need it.
Yeah, I I think that this is just, well, it is carryover language from the existing ordinance. That, you know, the city chose the category categorize these this way. But. You know, there is a catchall uh later down under eight. Yeah, right. Similar temporary uses, which in the opinion of the director are compatible. You know, there there's that. Catchall piece the director can use and that's in the. Uh, in the ordinance, it's just. You know, by removing this, does somebody feel like they are no longer allowed to do an art show? In a commercial zone. That's what comes to mind for me.
I mean, I I don't necessarily read it that way, but if if you are reading it that way, then we should not strike it.
Well, Jeff, Jeff, does the catchall satisfy your um? Concern about the.
Well, actually, the catchall is um. Is 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 problematic because it talks about similar temporary uses, so. Um. Maybe we haven't, I I guess maybe we haven't properly. Uh. Covered the universe of the things we want to let people. Actually. Put on um. We we, you know, we sort of know what we're what we're talking about it when we see it, but we haven't really talked about what kinds of events there could be um. Political rallies, uh, yeah, I don't know, just start thinking of things. I mean, um. Uh, I I guess actually it's probably okay because you got swap meets, you got outdoor sporting events. You've got. Outdoor and entertainment, uh, outdoor and indoor enter entertainment and assembly events. So, yeah, uh, yeah, okay, I I I can go with the catchall language.
I I have a thought. I don't know if it fits in here, but there there's a. Component of the geographic scope. Non stationary events, things either they're in multiple locations. On a pedestrian level, it might be putting on a a what's called a roving play. With where people walk all around the park or walk all around the of shopping mall. And there's in different places or on a vehicular level uh with multiple parking sites like a. Uh, a a home tour show or garden shows or something where a group of people all get together and they drive from one place to the next to the next for some reason. Uh, is that a? Category that goes in here or where does that fit in?
You need for each location. You you you, we can't open this up to have. Well, you can, you can get. Twenty different locations with one permit. You just can't do that. It's. They're all different. Uh, and and.
Well, maybe the.
We have to be careful about. I think Jeff's right. We have to be careful about. Defining art, defining culture. Et cetera, because uh. For example, you could have somebody put something on a blog. That uh four twenty day is coming. Everybody had a legacy park. Was that art? Is that educational or what, you know?
California it is.
Yeah, it's legal. Yeah, so the the you can dream up all kinds of things, um. Especially in art. I mean, you can paint, you can paint the the. The trees black and that's art. Okay.
Well, but but back to my question, though, if it's something is the geographic scope has some. There are multiple, it's roving or there are different locations. Does that fall under the similar? Eight, section eight, similar temporary uses in the opinion of the director? I don't think, I don't think if you wanted to do a garden show at six different houses. You'd be getting six different permits.
Yeah, well, that we we that we're now we're talking residential stuff because I was thinking about the same thing. We used to some organization I was involved with used to put on a cook's tour where you would go from. Uh, house to house and people would have their their. Kitchens and on display and and and. I don't think anybody ever got a permit for that, but but. And I don't think they do that anymore, but but you're right. It's it it's. I I think if you had uh if you had a roving. Uh, event that was going to take in more than. One commercial. Facility. Uh, you would have. A problem with that. You know, I mean, I don't think you would be able to do that. Except if you had two. Permits, right?
Well, you you'd be, you'd be exempt under the the size. It's not gonna have a hundred people show up.
If you're going over the size.
Yeah, you're gonna not gonna have a hundred people show up at each different. Location, that's five hundred cars, maybe five locations.
Yeah, but John, you haven't seen Dennis's cook tour yet.
There are no exemptions for commercial properties.
And do you need them? We just said you could have all you want, I think.
No, no, I I we were talking about the parks and and public facilities. But if you're talking about commercial properties, shopping centers, whatever. There are no exemptions for size. There's no exemption for. Anything which goes back to the problem I had at the beginning, which is there needs to be a de minimis. Rule carved out somehow, but.
Well, think think of a traveling event. Commercial.
Okay, so I I I think that we're kind of drifting, right? Into the realm. Let's let's bring it back. Let's focus. Do we want to add an item here for a roving event in commercial places? Yes or no?
No.
I wouldn't mind doing it. I just can't figure out how to do it.
Yeah, and what about if somebody wanted to do a parade in a commercial zone?
Again, it it should follow. You should get a T U P for a parade.
Director Malika, your hands up.
Certainly. Thank you, uh, Chair. So uh. On the parade, real quick, our streets are not zoned. Uh, so the city has not been requiring temporary use permits. On parades, if it's strictly within the right of way, because we can't say that they're commercially zoned properties. Uh, on item four, Zo racis uh put this in, I believe. It came from the council direction on the C T A. Because they wanted to encourage, I think would be the right word to use, small events. Like the art show in Legacy Park where it's twenty people showing their art. It's quiet. Uh, perhaps something that the the planning commission could think of here. Uh, think about here and Joe, perhaps you can, if needed, uh, go into this a bit more, but. This issue of what is art, cultural, educational? I Zo racis did kind of tackle that. They wanted to see if perhaps it could be limited to just. Uh, city sponsored events, local uh type groups. Uh, but perhaps something here is that a recommendation to the council that a policy. Uh, by the council and have the council help. Uh, kind of define and give guidance to staff on what is considered because to be that these small. Art, cultural and educational exhibits, because in a way this is your. De minimis. Waiver section here.
But can I ask you a question? Shouldn't this come from our city attorneys? Okay, because. You've got other issues. You've got constitutional issues. Can the city ban free speech? Can the city ban political parties? Can the city choose between? X and X. That's all laws, okay? And and whatever we should have in here defining something like art, and I'm an art major in college, okay?
Really?
Ever seen, I've never seen any institution. Put out. A specific. Description. Of art. Okay, for the very reason that it changes all the time. I mean. You got guys doing graffiti on walls and they sell for. Well, Banksy just sold one for five million dollars, okay? Um. It changes all the time and 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 nobody in the city of Malibu is qualified to define art. Nobody in the museum of modern art. Is they don't have a definition for art. It's what they want, what they want to show in their their galleries. That's their only definition. And uh. I think. When we try to define art or. Anything else. We better watch the lawyers because anybody can come in and say you let them do it. And. I want to burn a cross and uh. Throw cow manure at it, and that's art. You know, and and things like that have been done.
Okay. All right, hang on. All in agreement that we're not. We're not here to define that and that that's something that can get very complicated, so. If we need to make a decision as to whether we suggest that we keep this in here or we just put a question mark by it and say, let the city council and the city attorney. Determine how to work that language. Be before we do that, Commissioner Peak, Mr. Smith's got his hand up. Uh-oh.
I was just gonna say back to Jeff's point about the de minimis items. Um, I think maybe let us take a crack at what items would not. Require a T U P, you know, for example, non commercial speech activity protected by the constitution. You know, that would be something that would be in that list. And that may be a way to address what we're talking about here. And you just strike the section altogether. Under the catchall, uh, where it says similar uses. We could just change that to other uses. Um, that's the catchall under eight. Uh, other temporary uses, which in the opinion of the director are compatible with the zone and surrounding land uses. You know, it's in there. It it allows. Planning staff to have uh the ability to. Look at these case by case. And we're not. Singling any events out. That could be.
You're coming back to us, so that's fine with me if you want to play with it and try to satisfy it. That.
On this similar note to what John just said about needing lawyers, there was some talk about limiting this to Malibu nonprofits. I don't think you can do that. I think it doesn't matter where the nonprofits come. The question is more about whether the event is something of interest or impact to the Malibu community.
Well, we have an opinion being made, Craig. The the city attorney is doing that right now.
Correct. So so we are, we are looking into that. It is a very nuanced topic. Commissioner Hill is i- i- is likely right that we would likely. We don't want to, we obviously couldn't preclude or prohibit other nonprofits. There may be some wiggle room in terms of giving maybe some preference. To local nonprofits, the same way that certain, you know. Uh, right, you know, i- if you're a local resident, you get, you can get, you know. A a better deal at at certain businesses, stuff like that, but we we definitely are looking into it. And Commissioner Hill, you're accurate. We 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 would not be able to prohibit other nonprofits.
But but you could look at the 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 permit criteria in terms of the effect and or interest somehow. I don't know how you frame it, but. Relative to Malibu community. Whether it's of interest or of impact or, you know, how how do you weigh the balance?
Uh, I think. Yeah, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Jennings.
No, I just, I think John had made the right point. It's it's content. We have to be content neutral.
Yeah.
And.
Okay, so we're, I think we're all in agreement on being content neutral. I think that's a good way to put it.
Yeah.
Okay, um. If we scroll down a bit here. And looks like we're almost all the way to eight right now.
I want to go to five H.
Okay, five H.
Uh, does this mean we allow swap meets? For two consecutive days?
Yeah.
And we, we have no restriction on how, how many times a year you can do that?
No, it's the same restriction as, as all the other restrictions.
Isn't this for city parks or is this for everybody?
This. This, 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 this does not, is not included within the city park exemption.
Okay, so we can't have a Rose Bowl. Some guy decides to shut every Friday and Saturday. Have a Rose Bowl out here.
Because there's, you're opening a can of worms and I'm agreeing with you, John, that I, I, I think that we're all in agreement that you cannot do that.
Well, then we should say swap meets no more than one a year.
Well, but if, if La Paz or what, whatever the new name for La Paz is, something Ranch. If they decided they wanted to have in their back corner some guy who had a, you know, more. Community minded swap meet garage sale kind of thing. Not that they would, but.
I think that would be abysmal. Because it's, no, it's, it's a wonderful business. You get so much attempt. You'll take anything in. And you're attracting. People who are basically not paying sales tax and are competing with. Commercial businesses. And it's a swap meet. And I don't think Albu needs a swap meet, especially one that could go on. Every weekend.
Getting close to the farmer's market here, John.
Well, farmer's market. No, 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 no. I don't think it's close to farmer's market. It's a market. It's, it has, it has specific, there's a C U P that says you can't. You can't, uh, s- sell this. You can't sell that. You have to have X percentage of tents that are food before you have.
Is everybody having a problem with the audio from John?
No.
Oh, no, okay, nevermind.
We can work on it.
Just saying, that's a tightly regulated place.
Right, but, okay, but what about in, in between swap meet and farmer's market is like the crafts show, craft fair model.
There you are, yeah.
What is, how do you go with that?
Okay, you, again, it's the same thing as, as. It's the same thing as the farmer's market. You've got to define it limited because it's a commercial sales use. And we have. Commercial zoned properties. That it's competing with. It's like saying you can park a. Roach coach. Uh, in front of a restaurant. Okay? Or you can, uh. If you want to, you can sit out on the street and rent surfboards in front of a surfboard shop.
But do other shops in town, do other shops in town sell macrame, macrame pot holders and driftwood sculptures or?
We, we approved. Fifteen thousand square feet of galleries. In La Paz. Last time we did the C U P.
Look, John, just, it, it, I, I, I'm not sure you've got three votes to, to pursue this one. Much further.
Well, let me just ask, why would we want? A swap meet every weekend? Forever?
I don't think it's we, it's you.
Uh, it's. Why would we? Why would we? Why do you want a swap meet in central Malibu every weekend forever? And how many of them?
John, I think you're confused. The, the, the swap meets would be, the, the permit for the swap meets would be limited for six times. Uh, or six, six times, and it would only be good for, um. No more than sixty days.
On, on. Six times, what's six times sixty? You got five days a year where you can't have one.
The maximum, the maximum of sixty calendar days for swap meets.
Wait, hang on, but if you can only get six.
Two weekends. So you can have it every Sunday.
If you can only get six and they're limited to two consecutive days, that's twelve days a year.
Uh, you're right.
But, but. You can move them. There's no requirement for any facility. Goes from one to another, to another, to another, to another. It's.
It's site, it's site specific, and in, in this kind of event would likely be somebody applying for something that's more than a hundred people. And. I mean.
I, I do not think swap meets in, is in our use table, I, in our L I P. As a use. I don't think it's on our L I P table as a use. So we're gonna have to amend our L I P to do this. And. I just don't see the desire for, for. Swap meets. Now, people have garage sales. That's different. This is a town of ninety-five hundred people.
Yeah.
Okay?
Richard, it, 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 he meant. John mentioned the use table. Is swap meets in there anywhere? I mean, if it's not in there, then we probably shouldn't have it in here.
Let me.
I don't recall seeing it.
I've been over it a hundred times. I've never seen it, but I could be wrong. But again, it's, it's. I think Malibu is a. A town that has yard sales. It's not the Rose Bowl. You don't want to attract people to come to Malibu to go to a swap meet. Um. Especially.
We want them to come here and shop at Max Field and Chrome Hearts.
Well, or maybe, uh, Surfing Cowboys or something, but those people are paying rent, remember? And they're paying big time rent and they're getting, they have a C U P that allows them to do that. Now, we didn't used to allow card.
Okay, let's not take up more time on this.
Yeah. If, uh. Just one thing to add, th- this language is already in the existing. Ordinance, so the, the, I mean, in theory, this could have already been going on. Of course, if you would like to remove that option, that's entirely fine, but. It's not like staff has included this as a new addition to the, to the order.
No, that's, that's John's effort and, and unless he's got three votes, we need, we do need to move.
Well, I would, I would propose that we don't. We eliminate it unless it's in the L I P table. Is it a legal use in Malibu?
It's somebody.
The, the swap meets are not identified as a permitted or see, permitted use or allowable use.
That's why I'd like to eliminate it.
That does make it problematical. Right? I mean, how do you, like, if, I don't know. Seems contradictory.
Well. But the idea is that a temporary use shall mean any activity or land use of a temporary nature. That extends beyond what is expressly allowed by the applicable base zone in terms of use and development standards.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for a straw poll on this, that it's gonna be. Either three to two or four to one in favor of keeping it?
Yeah, I, I support keeping it.
So.
Well, the, 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 then that's where we're at. I, I, I'm on the fence, but it doesn't matter.
Okay, so we're gonna keep that now, and you, if you want, you can put an asterisk next to it that it was a, you know, not. We didn't get a hundred percent consensus on this one.
Right, exactly.
Okay, um, outdoor sporting events.
My question is, what does Little League and AYSO do? Do they apply for temporary use permits and are they limited? By. Time and duration and so forth?
Currently, we don't regulate, uh, Malibu Little League or AYSO. That's seen as part of the operation of the park.
Is there a reason why, because since they're not city organizations? Or that's just traditional?
It, it, the.
Reason is exactly what he said it was.
Yeah, there were, the park was permitted with ball fields and it. Uh, in eighty-three, made permanent in eighty-six by a C D P. It was part of the, the uses that were established.
Yeah.
I'll buy it if you will.
I buy it.
Okay, now, the next one, as I read it. Six or seven. Says you can have a sporting event without any limitation on, on time. As long as it's within three hundred feet of a permitted location. Let's see.
A sporting event or temporary farmer's market?
Oh, that's the farmer's market. What's the sporting event? So. You can have it outdoor sporting event.
Yes.
Anyways, just in commercial, though.
Either way, John, either way, on public land or on commercial properties, you can have it. Either place.
Okay? They need any parking?
Except, except Legacy Park. That's, that's deed restricted.
Right, yes, you're quite right, yeah.
And also trankas.
Right.
Both of which, which would be picked up at the facility's use permit.
Right, and we already know that.
Okay, so let's go on to seven.
Seven is largely just verbatim language that was in the city council urgency ordinance.
Okay, do we want to consider making it a non-urgency and making it longer?
Can we, can we do that under the deed restriction?
Well, the, I, I don't know. There was, you know, a, a million letters and articles in the paper lately about everybody wants to have it at. Legacy Park. Instead of fighting the college all the time. So. You know, I would rather have him not have to come back. What is it? Every, every sixty days? For a new one?
This is a one calendar year allowance. And there was language, um, Pat, I don't know if you could represent this, but the city attorney had language in this, in the city council meeting. Regarding the deed restriction and the waivers that need to get signed and it's. You know, there's, there's a road ahead to do it, but one thing that needs to get added is a permanent. Placeholder for. The farmer's market use in this T U P section.
Okay, then it's fine. Why, how is this different than, um? Uh. Than the chicken show I'm gonna have at, at Legacy Park? Why, why is it being treated differently in, uh? With a special section? Why?
Chicken show?
Ah. It's getting.
Yeah, and, and I'll just give you the background, um, that I'm aware of, Jeff. We were, uh, going back to Zerasis, the November meeting, the third one. Um, it was at that time, there was discussion about this. I believe the language came from. Uh, city attorney's office and city manager. In terms of trying to understand how to address this issue. Uh, that, anyway, that's, that's what we talked to Zerasis about, the crafting of this urgency ordinance to allow something to move quickly.
Well, okay, but let, let me just put it this way.
Sure.
If, if somebody wants to hold, have a special, uh, a, a, an event, right? Um, and it's not prohibited by the, uh. The restrictions that were placed on the park when we bought it. Can they do that or can they not do that? Why is, why is this being treated? Any, any differently than anybody else who wants to hold an event?
Because this one exempts, this one. Doesn't count against the absolute maximum.
Yeah, I know, but, but earlier in this discussion, we. My argument was that we shouldn't. Have those maximum. On, uh, in public, um, city properties, city parks. So if you, if you buy. If you buy that premise, then, then now what's the difference?
Well, one may pass and one may not at city council.
Okay, well, I think that you could put an asterisk next to this that says that. If you're gonna go with the other one, then you don't need this.
One, one question I have is, um. I, I can appreciate how attractive it would be to have the market. There where it is. I haven't really hung out since they've moved it there. But I wonder, uh, does it in any way impinge or impact, uh, the wildlife or any of the, the? More aquatic, the more marsh-like sections of the park, or is it really contained? Such that wildlife is not disturbed?
They're, they're, they're not allowed to. Here's the park. They're allowed to use the sidewalk.
Just the sidewalk, so in, in.
They're not, they're not setting up tents over in the, uh.
I- i- in terms of spill over effect or anything, though, I mean, it's one thing to say this is an urgency, emergency kind of thing. It's another thing to say we want to do it forever. And so you're basically saying there are no effects on the rest of the park?
Well, not by this, but it isn't, this isn't forever. This is just saying that once you get. Your T U P. It, it doesn't count against everything else, and Jeff is right. We've already addressed that unless they. Deep six back.
This is giving the ability for them to get the T U P, but I think that.
Yeah, not exclude everybody else.
I, exactly like how Jeff said, that this is sort of captured in the language that we reworked earlier. So if, if we're gonna go with that language and the council's gonna go with that language, then we don't need this.
And I think actually that the facility's use permit. Uh, that they would have to obtain, or anybody that wants to use Legacy Park would have to. Obtain would take that into consideration. Where in the park are you going to be doing things? What's it going to be like? Are you going to be near the water? Or, you know, what are you going to be doing? Uh, that can be under the control of the, of the. Whatever department handles that, that facility.
Yeah, believe me, it is. I've been through their T U P application. And, uh.
So let's go on to.
Very strict. I just would say, what you need here is just. Uh, uh, comment like he's got on this thing to the city council that if you get rid, if you get rid of X, the one before we worked on. Or if you keep, if you do what we said on the one before, you don't need this one. That's all. But you know, we'd want to eliminate both of them because then.
Are you good with that, Joseph?
Uh, this, this one, I'm, I'm like fifty percent clear on which, which way we're going on this one, so.
So, so, sort of, the, the intention for this is that. I think that we kind of, we kind of look at that use as being captured under. The, uh, previous language that we used. I think it was A of something or B of something, um.
For the public parks.
Correct, for the public parks, which maybe was O four O B.
Got it.
Okay, and that, if they're gonna keep the language as we've proposed for that, then this is not necessary.
There's O four O A, O four O A.
Or.
It's redundant. So I would, I would leave it up to the city attorney at the time of the hearing of the city council. Since he wrote it.
Do you follow us on that?
Yeah, I gotcha. It, yeah, that's where I was, I was missing the, the link, so, um, I'll just, I'm just gonna put a placeholder in here. To follow the city attorney's office.
Yeah, if, if they go that direction and they're okay with that language, then this isn't necessary. If they don't go that direction and they change that language, then you need something like this in there.
Interesting.
All right, um, would you move the, uh, screen so we can look at that? Wow, guys, we've almost made it through page five. We're really, really making progress here. Um, okay.
Should have been A D U's.
Better write them, sorry.
Hey, on that note, on that note, should we, uh, issue some comment to the following people hanging out for the following item? And what time is it? It's.
Why don't we just limit ourselves to getting through this in the next forty-five minutes and then we can get to those items and, and handle them?
Well, because better, better do it right than do it again.
Because I think we stop at ten thirty, don't we?
Yeah, we don't start a new item after ten thirty and we, so we've got like, you know, what is it, eighteen?
So we're not getting to those tonight. So they just stood around, hung around here for four hours.
So Mesa Verde Lane.
Really good.
Can I make a motion to, uh, give Mesa Verde Lane five B and let them go home?
Yeah, except it's, it's, that's not the name. Is it Ver- Verdi Mesa?
Verdi Mason.
Well, I think that they've heard us. If they're listening, they recognize that and we'll deal with the. Mechanics of that here shortly.
No need for a motion? I'll second his motion if.
Oh, yeah, there's, I, I don't want to start jumping around here. I say we just, it's, it's, it's been clear, the, the. Direction, and so let's, let's continue with this.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
All right, um. So this is sort of that, that language that sort of encompasses other things and, and gives the, uh. The wherewithal to the director.
Yeah, and, and I had just said we could change similar to other.
Yeah.
Broaden it.
All right.
Yeah.
We're all good with that?
Yep.
Um, and we're good with striking L?
No.
Yeah, that one had already sunsetted. Anyway.
All right, um, so if we go down to the bottom there, D?
Major.
Major. Okay, so we're kind of, are we all in agreement that, uh? The thousand people?
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. And, and the whole idea of the major, uh, uh. T U P makes a lot of sense to me with one problem. And that is that. Timing in, in the case of these events. You have to work back from the day that you're planning to hold it, rather than saying, okay, whenever I get the permit, I can go forward. And running it through. And running it through. The planning commission. Uh, let's say our commitment is not necessarily to getting through the agenda on any given night. Uh, and as a result. Uh, if you have somebody who's got a. A major. C U or T U P heading in front of us. And we can't get to it, and we kick it off, and we kick it off, it's gonna be just, you know, it's gonna be. Basically meaning that you can't do anything, you, you'll never get a major permit, so. Um. I would, there's a couple of ways you could deal with that, one is that you could advance it to the top of the calendar. Uh, by, uh, by just. Planning commission procedure. Another way you could do it is to say, okay, you've got thirty days to rule on it, if you don't rule on it, it becomes, uh, the, the. Director's, uh, discretion. Um, that, but there, I think in order to make this work, there has to be some. Way of building a fire under the planning commission to, to actually get a decision made.
Um, comment, I. I can see how we could do number one, where we procedurally put it first, I can't imagine. Any planning commission hearing a bunch of little projects before something where a thousand, two thousand people are gonna show up in Malibu, but. We could say it's always a prior, it's always heard. First. Something like that, to say it's automatically approved. As far as I'm concerned, too many games can be played to get some craziness automatically approved, somebody could come in and say we're gonna have the. Uh, the. Formula five hundred run up Coast Highway. You know?
Wow, really? When?
Yeah.
We already did that.
How awesome it would be if we had an F one event here, right up over Cannon, it'd just be beautiful.
Yeah, we could have a couple thousand cars show up first.
Like when they used to race around, around Sicily, Emilia, Emilia.
No, Emilia. They didn't used to do it, they still do it.
Not in Sicily anymore.
Not in Sicily, it's in northern Italy.
Um, well, hey, here back in Malibu, um. I understand, I understand the, the need and the, for, for the series or the, the ongoing, that version of the major. But honestly, what, what event of more than a thousand people is in the community's interest, period? I mean, I, I hear nothing but bad things about the marathon, I hear all kinds of people complaining about that, I'm sure a lot of people love it, but what about people in the community? What, what thousand member?
You sometimes hear a few loud voices that seem to complain a lot. And the ones that often remain silent are people that are very content and happy, and the thousands of people or hundreds of people from the city that go down there and compete in those events. And love it. So there's two sides to that story, I want to be very clear about that.
Okay, so there's hundreds of people from the city who go in the marathon. Okay.
But, but, but Craig, the reason that, that, what we're trying to do with it is to put it in front of a political body. Us. In order to, to be able to represent the, to decide whether it's the interest of the people of Malibu in order to do this, I mean. I can't imagine frankly ever voting for a circus, but. Who knows, you know, maybe, yeah, I might, might. Things change, I could, you know, there might be something that would lead me in that direction.
Just wait till Trump wants to have a MAGA rally at Blues Park.
So this is, this is, uh, uh, Chili Cookoff would go under this, or they, they're, they have a C U P, or how does that work?
Well, they still have to get major temporary use permit, right?
They'd be, they'd be a major.
They would be a major.
I can't conceive of us not considering major events, we're a small town with one way in and one way out. So we have.
I, I'm just wondering, you know, trying to get a handle on what are those major events of a thousand people that we would even want?
That, that, that raises the question, I, I, I wanted to ask Richard, where? You know, we've got, what, twenty, thirty years of experience in this, have we ever had a major event? Other than the Chili Cookoff? Where, that, that these sections would apply to? I can't think of one.
Uh, the ones that come to mind over the years would be the.
Dumash Day?
Pardon me?
Chumash Day?
Uh, Chumash Day, the, uh, the guitar festival that took place a couple of years back, uh, in the civic center area. Uh. The marathon, obviously. Um, I know Pepperdine hosted a volleyball tournament, I don't know if it got to the thousand, they, they used the. The courts, this is many years ago, uh, the, the volleyball courts down at Zuma. To hold an event, uh, but we have seen a few, I mean, the, the jazz festival that you guys heard last June, that, that was a couple thousand.
Oh, okay, so we do have to have it on the menu.
Yeah, and, and let me ask you a question, Richard. Pepperdine, when they build a mountain, they're gonna have. Five thousand person events regularly, okay? Um.
Like twice a week?
Any control over that at all?
No, that's outside the city.
Even, even though they use the city streets, et cetera, they just no control.
Unless they were going to. Park or hold some form of, you know, rent a lot for parking or something like that. Uh, but no, they're, they're outside the city, and our comment, we, we commented on their E I R. Uh, both the first time and most recently.
Okay, but if they, if they rented. Their own property, the wave property. And use it for a parking lot, which they have proposed. Um. And we would have control.
We would have a say over that lot.
That lot, yes.
And would that come under the thousand, thousand person event, because there's a thousand people that could possibly park there?
If you were gonna have a thousand people there, yes, but if you weren't.
They're gonna have five thousand.
Well, they're gonna have five thousand offsite outside the city of Malibu.
Yeah.
Oh, they're gonna have to park them, they don't have the parking for five.
But they may not be parking five thousand cars there, they may be parking only, you know, five hundred cars there.
What if we can, can we impose any, uh, control via traffic control measures? Cause they're obviously, they're gonna impact traffic in the city.
That's all, that's all part of the deal, they have to turn in a plan for that every time.
To this, to the city.
Yes, absolutely.
Even for their events on, that are nominally just on Pepperdine?
No.
No, they don't.
Their events that are up at Pepperdine, they do not have to do that.
Well, why don't we, why don't we just make it a little simpler, just make it seven hundred and fifty? You know, I mean, there's thousands, a lot for Malibu, a thousand's a lot, it's, it's one tenth of our population.
But that's also the threshold that you're looking at, where. I think if you're an event that you're planning for seven hundred and fifty people, you might as well be planning for a thousand people.
Right, but we might as well be looking at it if it's nine hundred. That's what I'm saying, eh, if you're saying we never have.
I'm comfortable with a thousand, let's, let's, let's hash that one out real quick, cause that can mu- move us along here.
I could go seven fifty. I mean, once it's a big event, it's a big event that maybe we should talk about.
Yeah, but the thousand is, it's. Just leave it.
I'm gonna stick with, I'm gonna stick with a thousand.
Alright, so you've got.
If you guys wanna put in. If you wanna put an asterisk next to that and note that it was, uh, three to two. You know, that's fine, but we can go forward with a thousand.
Back to my question, though, if they've got five thousand on Pepperdine. They're nonetheless gonna have massive traffic effects on city streets, can we condition or control that in some way with a permit?
Well, if they wanna close a city street like ci- civic center away for some reason, yes.
I mean, there, the, the, all of those events that you guys are referencing are clearly outside of the city, Pepperdine did that for a reason, cause they didn't want to have to come to us and ask. That's pretty, pretty clear.
Yeah.
Probably a pretty wise move.
Yeah, we let them get away with, uh. John Tyler not being widened, so everybody's gonna come out at a two lane road.
At least there's a light there.
Hmm, exactly.
So why don't we talk about things that we have some possible way of controlling instead?
Alright, so let's move on, if you can go to the next page.
D, D is good.
Now, where are we now, we're on what, five?
He's gonna pull up to two.
D two, yeah.
Are we on five?
We're on the top of page six.
Page six.
That's not what's showing here.
You're correct, he's gonna, he's gonna change it. Thank you. Um.
Yeah, I think this will be it. Two will be it.
Hey?
What do you mean by will be it?
That's. When we're done talking about this, we're done talking for the evening, and then we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do, or a special meeting or something, but go ahead.
Well, we should, I think we should go through. The, the next section started seventeen sixty-eight, oh, six eight, oh, six oh.
Great, then that means that this will be a really quick conversation, awesome.
Yeah, and actually, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I like everything under, uh, D. One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, I don't see much reason, as a matter of fact, I was kinda surprised and pleased when I saw number three, because. Yeah, it gives us a check, a chance to second, take a second look, if somebody says, hey, I wanna do more than, than, uh. Sixty events or sixty days, whatever it is, uh, I've got this opportunity to do something else, let him come and make an argument to us, it doesn't cost. Well, it costs something, but it doesn't, it's not an arm and a leg.
Okay, well, let me ask, can I ask you about five and six? Do, do you wanna have? Uh, construction yards, and do you wanna have circuses?
Well, I, first off, I don't think we're gonna have a construction yard or a circus that has more than a thousand people, or maybe a circus, but not a construction yard that has more than a thousand people?
I had in my notes, uh, just commissioned, I had my notes here for four and five to strike this.
Okay, because we, we struck those elsewhere, too.
Wait, hang on, the, the thousand attendees, that's only D one, right, the thousand number doesn't necessarily apply to any of these others.
No, I, that's the way I read it, too.
Yeah. Um, and, and if I, just to be clear.
Okay.
D two would be, um, that's where the film series would go, right?
But that's the season, that the, the.
Oh, that's the seasonal event.
Uh, yeah.
We're, we're.
Well, the, hold on, the, the film thing, we said if, if the film thing's going on in a location that hasn't approved C U P.
Yes.
Then that's okay, they would be coming back to us for a major or anything, I want to be very clear about that.
Yes, right, but, uh, what we were, what we were talking about is, is the, the sequential. Event, right, somebody who wants to hold one month or something like that.
Not the Films Society, if, if it was.
Trankus.
If it was the, the, uh, the Jewish Center saying, we wanna hold a car show. Um, on, you know.
Every month.
Every month. That would be major, and that would.
Where is that, where is that, Joseph, the, and the? You said that there was reference to the.
I think it's on number, number two, if we go up a little bit.
Yeah.
The event extending beyond fourteen consecutive days?
Correct, he's gonna, he'll adjust the screen.
Oh, yeah, so forty, or beyond thirty days for a seasonal event. So that could be like the, that could be Skylar's Guitar Festival, the week long summit of guitarists playing somewhere.
I think we're on the wrong page.
It's page six, should be.
Yeah.
Top of the page. There it is. That's two different things, an event that will extend beyond fourteen days or beyond thirty days for a seasonal event.
Yeah, and that just means you can come before, it just means you can come before. Uh.
If you wanna do it, you have the ability to come before the planning commission to ask.
Yeah.
Well, is that true, because, uh, eight K says a planning director?
Eight. Eight.
On page four, uh, five and fourteen. Well, that's. Says similar to uses which. Depending on the planning director.
Uh, now, now we're on to D now, uh.
Yeah.
So, we've left that.
But I, I, I think, I think that D sort of starts us into a different.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
On a commission. The, the, the seasonal event thing, the, the harks back to this business about. That minor exception of, for a Christmas tree lot or pumpkin sale. Uh, however, such activity may extend beyond the fourteen day maximum. Per section seventeen sixty-eight, oh, four, oh, B. But shall. And, well, now it's. It shall be limited to thirty consecutive calendar days, what did you have in mind, Joseph, how is, how is, uh, on page five, the? Uh, I'm sorry, the, the, uh, under two. Event will extend beyond fourteen days. Or thirty days for a seasonal event, how does that interplay with? Uh, six, seventeen sixty-eight, oh, four, oh. C. One.
Yes, so, so what's going on there is that? I'm just looking here. So the idea here is that. Seasonal activities. Can be longer than fourteen days with a minor T U P, but no longer than thirty days. Just gives, it just gives more allowance for, at the director level to approve up to thirty days, if there's a situation. That comes in where somebody wants longer than thirty days.
Ah, okay, then it becomes a major, alright, got it, thank you.
And that, and that might, well, probably is not a pumpkin lot, cause that, they wouldn't need that more than thirty days, but possibly a Christmas tree lot, given that. People are allowed to put up their Christmas decorations from November fifteenth through January, there, there's a two month window there where you can have your.
You're not gonna buy it after Christmas, Craig.
No, that, I'm saying they might buy it at, wanna buy it at November fifteenth, all the way up through, that's, so that's six weeks right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, on number three. We wanna change the language again on own parks and city hall. To whatever standard language we were using.
City owned parcels and parks.
Yeah. Okay, uh.
And you're striking four, you're striking five.
Yes.
Um. Six days.
You wanna keep, you wanna keep circuses, okay, you guys. Lovely.
And we don't wanna discriminate.
Well, you wanna have a circus over sixty days? Or thirty days?
No. Whatever. Circuses.
There's an old saying, John, uh, elect a clown, expect a circus.
Well, I got a casino that would go on called Circus Circus.
Not my circus, not my monkey.
Um. Alright, um.
It's getting late.
Seven looks okay. Although, there's a part of seven that I think. Goes back, we were talking about the general welfare stuff earlier, and. Where was that listed? We made, we made some correction to that, and like the same language here is what I'm saying.
You put in a reference to neighborhoods.
Correct, and that was in, in order to reflect the same, some of the same language that was written in the beginning under the purpose.
Right.
Which, hey?
Can I make a suggestion on process here, maybe, given that we're kind of approaching a, a stopping point somewhere soon? Um. Maybe Joseph could, could take a quick glance at what's coming ahead. In terms of, um, if there's anything, like obviously, staff could be going through what we've done already, and. We could be running through that at some point when we see this again. Maybe there's a way to look at what's coming ahead and ask us if there are any crucial questions. To address now, so what we see the next time might be more complete.
Complicated, Craig, you got.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we, we're gonna, we're gonna pause here at the end of this, um, and we're gonna, are we gonna? Try to get a special meeting to go over this, what do you guys wanna do?
Uh, I, I will put it this way, my tax returns over two hundred pages long. And I cannot throw in a special meeting before April fifteenth. No way.
April eighth. For an extension, come on. I'm just joking.
You know, it's just, you.
You know, I, 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 I think that there are a lot of things that we have said tonight, which. Will. Guide the treatment of, uh. The parts we haven't gotten to yet, the findings and so forth.
That's kind of.
And my suggestion would be to, uh, Joseph has sat here and suffered listening to us, and. We let him have a, have a crack at it, and bring it back, and just bring it back at a regular meeting. Would, will hopefully be able to skim over it, and, and unless we will have forgotten by that time what we said tonight, and we have to go over it all again, but maybe we can. We can avoid that and just get on to the new stuff and, and, uh. And, and do it that way, I don't.
Why don't we, when we do that, why don't we try to limit ourselves to saying we're gonna talk about this for two hours, and I'll do my best to keep us on.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I think, I, I, I really think that. This has been taking over two and a half years. Okay? And. If you do it half ass, it's gonna take another two and a half years in the future, and. For a couple hours, you can do it right, you know, you don't have to limit it to two hours, if it's three hours, it's three hours. For a couple hours, you can do it right, you know, you don't have to limit it to two hours, if it's three hours, it's three hours.
Yeah, I don't think we need an artificial time limit, just to say.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying that I'm I'm doing my best to try to make us be punctual with these kinds of things. My, my hope when we started this this evening was that. We were gonna be able to get to those other items, and I apologize to those people if they're even still listening, because. One of us should have. Said something about that, you know, two hours ago to let them go.
Yeah, well, they.
Going, and and I apologize to them for that. Um.
Okay.
Well, we should have restructured the meeting, we should have, we should have taken this second and just heard those things.
Yeah.
But, and I don't think, John, I I don't think that nobody's trying to half ass this in any way, shape or form, I think all of us are bringing valuable things to the table with this.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we shouldn't set limits when we, we'll set the limit when we run out of things to talk about.
Understood, when.
Um, just be mindful that we need to be efficient.
Yes.
Yeah, and now, uh, uh. Uh, city attorney, can we make this to a data uncertain, so they? They have time to fit it into a meeting where we'll have time, um.
Do we have to renotice it?
Well, it's an ordinance, and do we have to reknow?
No, 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 but no, 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 I thought you were talking about five B, um. We can bring, we can bring this back, this this thing can come back anytime Joseph wants to bring it back, right?
Sure. Correct, that that's my understanding, but I I see uh, Ms. Evans has her hand up, so I will, I will defer to her.
I didn't see her.
She's muted.
Um, sorry about that, I would just like to mention the next two meetings are fairly full. Um, but I'm wondering if Joseph feels like he would be prepared for a May first hearing. Um, that re, first due date would be a report to Adrian on April twelfth.
Um, can I ask you a question, is, how, how, what does April first look like?
The first. All right, the first, the first meeting in April, um, has. Right now. Uh, four items, larger items have been noticed, and then there are. Two items on consent and a report.
So we have four larger items, I would suggest we do it the meeting after that.
No, 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 what Rebecca suggested is May first. The May first, first, the first meeting in May.
Then that was what I was suggesting, either the first or second meeting in May, depending on what Joseph feels he needs time wise for. The draft report, that would mean a draft report to Adrian either on April twelfth or on April twenty sixth.
Yeah, what I'm asking you is, are those, are are those meetings busy?
Yes, I'm saying.
Yes, they're full.
I'm saying, the meetings, the meetings in May are not busy yet. The meetings in April are quite full.
So I would say that we want to be in May, because we don't want to have to renotice.
Right, so then. Um, Joseph, if you could tell me whether which. Meeting, whether you prefer the May first or the May fifteenth, in terms of timing your report updates.
Yeah, I just personally, I wanna get this. Um, moving, so May first works for me, I'll just go through, um, Richard, does that?
And Richard, yeah.
Your timing?
No, that's fine, we can, right now, those are a light agenda, so we can accommodate this.
Okay, I make a motion, we continue this item to May first and request that.
And that, yeah.
And not a lot of, not a lot of, not a lot of other items are. Scheduled that night.
So when does Verde Mesa come to us again now?
Yeah.
I would, would you like to continue that to the next meeting? I, and again, I'm planning director Malika. You let me know. Um, but if we moved it to the next meeting, one of the items on that is a report that could easily be moved to a subsequent meeting. The other hearings. Um. Are not quite as easily moved. We have two items that have been continued from private previous meetings and two new projects on that meeting.
Since the Mesa Verde one, or Bernie Mesa, or whatever it is. Is continuing, it'll be heard first, correct?
Correct.
It'll be a four item.
Well, there would be, at the next meeting, we currently have two items that have been continued to that meeting, so we have four A and four B. And a five A and five B.
So you probably wanna bump at least, well, not at least, but probably bump one of the new items.
Well, you have to renotice them.
Yeah, but, I mean, it it just sounds like we might not get to it anyway, so renoticing would be more efficient.
Oh, my.
Oh, we could get, I mean.
I say, I I think it's best that we now kinda have the 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 full playing field, let's take both of these one at a time now. So I believe that there was an attempt at a motion for the zoning text amendment, I say let's handle that first, and then, and then proceed to. The two eight nine oh six Verde Mesa lane item.
I'll, I'll second that motion to May first for the Z T A.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. And Chair, would you like me to call the roll?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
What's the motion?
Um, continue the Z T A to the May first meeting.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I move we continue. Mesa Verde to.
Verde Mesa.
Stand at the next, Bernie Mesa to the next meeting, is that correct?
I think so, Richard.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, the date is?
Uh, the date will be April third.
That's my motion.
I'm sorry, I was looking at my notes to make a note of the date it's going to, who seconded that?
I did.
Friendly, friendly amendment. To to bump one of the new things off that now, just so, cause I mean, at the rate we go. Be more certainty for somebody to not have to show up and then get kicked out again.
Yeah, but they have to go renotice, Greg, and that's, that's. Right?
Perhaps rather than formally making that decision, um, Richard, would you like some time to look over? The items and to come to a conclusion about what, what would be moved?
I I think as Commissioner Mazza brought, it was, I think hinting towards, since it's been noticed. Uh, if it gets moved at the next hearing, then it can be done in a public forum, so there's not a need to renotice, I believe.
Be great.
Good point.
Commissioner Mazza was getting at.
I withdraw my amendment.
Yeah, all we need to do is vote.
And you need to wake up your recording secretary. Okay.
It's not even eleven yet.
There's not enough coffee in my life, all right, Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries, you're adjourned.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thanks, Joseph.
When do we get one of those months with the five Mondays in it?
This is that, this is that month.
We just added.
Oh, geez.
This is the month.
Stay dry and pray for not too many mudslides.